Number is present. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
I'm here.
Anne is also here and John.
John is here.
Okay, the first order of business, which I always forget, is a public comment on non-agenda items. This would include people on Zoom. No.
Nothing on Zoom, Lynn?
Kathy? In that case, can I have a motion to open the public tree hearing?
I move it from select board, open the public tree hearing.
Second. All in favor? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I thought you were opposed.
Huh? I don't want to do it, but we're here, so I might as well do it.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
And John says yes.
And John says yes. And the trees that we are considering. The first is... Oh. That's what I always, also always forget. Now that we've opened the hearing, is there anything we need to do on the action list?
I think there are two items on it.
There are two items that are on the agenda. I'd like to add something to the action list, which is a consideration of the letter from the Open Space and Recreation. We should put that on the agenda for our next meeting. Anything else? Okay, back to trees. The first tree on the list is the tree across from Norwood, 38 Norwood Avenue, which is a 30-inch sugar maple.
Yeah, this is one that I noticed because I live in the neighborhood. And my concern here was it's over the parking lot in the play area where kids do, and it's on its way out like a lot of the sugar maple trees. Usually when they get this far gone, it's just a matter of time and give us some opportunity to maybe plant some other trees in the situation there. Sugar maple.
Sir? Anyone on the board who has a comment on the sugar maple across from 38 Norwood?
Just that I would defer to Tom.
Is there anyone in the audience on Zoom? Okay. Are we ready to vote on the recommendation that that tree being wrote?
Some of...
No, wait. You have to do the voting after the... Yeah, okay.
Technically, you should hold off on voting until you've taken all testimony, but
Okay.
if you want to treat each...
Let's, let's... Let's do it the right way.
Then I will refract my motion.
Thank you. Okay, the next tree is at 28 Norwood in the A 10-inch spruce in the grassy area near the fountain.
My comment on it is it's a healthy tree. It presents the only green foliage in that area in the wintertime. Bird activity, sort of. I like it. Most of the neighbors like it. The trees surrounding it certainly need pruning. We have pruned in that area in the past, but the trees have crowded it out a little bit, but that's my opinion. It's a healthy tree. I would prefer that the tree remains. And we work on the trees that surround it and not crowding it out.
Does anyone in the audience or on Zoom?
Yes. If it's a healthy tree, why do anything with it? Like he was saying, it's the only foliage in that area.
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address?
Rachel Rody, 3 Powderhouse Lane.
Thank you.
I would like, I would vote to keep it. I would like to keep a healthy tree. We need a healthy tree.
Okay, the next?
I'm sorry, there's a hand up. Sandy has her hand up.
Sandy, please. If you don't mind, state your name and address.
Sure, Sandy Rogers, A2 Old Essex Road. I agree, it's a healthy tree. We should be protecting all healthy trees at this point, given we're going to be losing so much in the future. It's a green, evergreen, and yeah, we should be looking at ways that we should be pruning around it. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I looked at the tree. Tom, you might want to take off the lower row of branches, which are all dead. They're about six feet off the ground, five and a half and six feet. And, you know, in pine trees, they tend to be a little shorter and pretty much faded in terms of use.
I know exactly.
But other than that, looks good to me.
At 117 School Street, a 30-inch ash. Tom?
Yeah. It's probably 60, 70% dead at the top. Typical of most of the older ash trees on the streets especially. They're being infested by a pest that eventually may succumb to the emerald ash worm. We've already taken several down. Unfortunately, we may lose all of the ashes in town. Also, it's erupting the sidewalk. I consider this a secondary factor. I'd prefer to save the tree if it was a nice, healthy tree and do something about the sidewalk. In this case, my recommendation would be to remove the tree.
Who else on the board?
I also agree. I've been driving around looking at trees today and just drive by and it looks dead. And if Tom says that's the...
Okay.
Because I tend to agree.
Anyone here or on Zoom? The next on the list is 23 Old Neck Road. It's a 36-inch red oak.
The tree has a little top dead wood in it. It's been pruned in the past. A tree like this, to me, I've read the owner's request and things, magnificent tree like that certainly doesn't warrant its removal, especially being the species it is. Sometimes we can't tell what's going on in the tree, but it's certainly in no imminent danger of damaging the house or the property. The previous owner or the previous, to the previous had some pruning done on it. She paid for herself to clear the house that was there. That's my understanding that the people who bought the property intend to raise the house and build a new structure there, but I don't see in any way how this sets in. What I've seen of the plan of the new house.
Questions on the board?
Well, I agree with Tom. I took a look at it today. It looks like a beautiful, healthy tree. The only thing I noticed was that the, there were power lines running right through the middle of it at a very bad spot, but it looked like a very strong, healthy tree to them.
Well, you know, respectfully, this is Jane Rice, and I'm the owner of 23 Old Neck. And if possible, I was hoping to share my screen with the room as well as with the people online. Mark Secoria is my arborist, and he has spent some decent amount of time with me with that particular tree. And his concern was not just the dead at the top, but also decay at the ground level. And there's a lot of, I guess, kind of utility trenching repeatedly in that area. He also feels that the plows have hit it pretty consistently. And he feels that it's very hard to tell with the root system and then the construction and the demolition that's going to be happening there, additional damage that's going to happen from the tree. But one of the things that he shared with me is... So I'd love to show you pictures of how this tree hangs over this property, if that's...
I think we've all... You've driven by recently. You've driven by recently. I drove by today. So we've...
Well, the only reason is that he shared with me, I guess, about two weeks ago in peepity without warning, I guess, and with no wind, a very similar tree, similar, same species, same size, relative size, situated almost identically on the road like this one is, blew over right on top of a house. And there was no, there was no windstorm. There was no anything. It's just that the roots kind of gave way. And his concern was absolutely that this house... The picture I have for you just shows, when you're looking at the side of how the tree hangs over, it's well over, it's well arched over the house. So between the dead stuff at the top, the decay on the roots, which he shared pictures of with me that I was hoping to share, and then the situation and the angles, he feels that it's not safe, given what we're doing with construction there and the excavation and the construction that's going to be going on right around and all through that root system. So I was hoping to share a screen if that's possible. If it's not appropriate, that's totally fine, too.
Sharing a screen is a slightly complicated procedure.
Okay.
I'd like to show, just a big look at it.
Okay. Right, please.
Should be able to.
I apologize. Was that a question for me?
Yep.
You should be able to share screen.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you so much. So let me just pull this up here. Can everybody see this? My screen?
It's coming.
Okay.
I don't know if you can make it any larger.
This is just, I'm giving you an example of the tree that he thought was very similar to the one that is currently in front of...
So this is not the tree?
This is not the tree.
Not, not the only... Because it's situated almost identically. It would be worthwhile for the committee to see this, which is why he suggested that I share this with you. So you can see that it's right up against the road in a similar fashion with similar decay right here. This was, I think, a week before this tree actually collapsed.
Please, the...
And, you know, laved on the house. So the tree that I want to show you is mine, obviously. Similar position. Here's the decay at the bottom that he wanted to point out, which he's concerned about. And then, and that's just a wider angle of it, and it goes up the tree and also feels that there are plows that have hit this. And then, this is really the picture, I guess, that he also wanted to show, which, this is the angle of the tree over exactly where the house is going to be. So all of the land there is going to be under excavation where the roots are. So there's already dead, you know, dead stuff up top. The root, or the bottom, he feels is under decent can decay. And then this angle makes it very clear that it's, you know, very much within striking distance if it falls over.
Can we get Tom's comments on that? Yes, please.
What you say are issues with the tree. I think I would like to see the construction. I'd like to really say, see what effect the construction, when they do digging and trenching in the area, whatever, what they do damage for roots. But at this time, I don't feel what I see in the business for 50 years. I've only known maybe five trees that have ever fallen on houses. And every situation is sort of specific to what's going on. It's hard to tell. I mean, that's why, that's why if we want to be 100% safe in our house, because we have a large, huge... Basically, it is, comes under our qualification for heritage tree. It doesn't warrant taking it down this time because I don't see the decline in the tree to that extent, which is anywhere near an imminent situation. Maybe down the road, five years from now, if there is extensive rot, you'll notice it very, very gradually in the foliage of the tree. And if we see decline, then we can bring it back. But I certainly wouldn't take a tree down like that because I won't be 100% sure that it isn't, isn't going to fall on my house. Like I say, one or two, three trees maybe in 55 years in the tree business have I seen only one in this town, a roadside tree, ever fall. But that's why this situation, when trees fall on houses or trees, things happen with trees, we know this. But it tends to be over exaggerated, in my opinion. And I don't warrant, feel what I see there. And I think many arborists would agree with me that especially, it's the only big, big oak on that road, really. And they took down probably 30 or 40% of the trees that surrounded the whole backside of the house, many trees. I don't actually know until they dig a foundation to see. But we've had situations in the past where I've gone over and looked, and I felt it was okay. But I can never, no one can guarantee if we have a hurricane, you know.
Becky?
I just want to say, I do know Jane Rice, but that doesn't have any bearing on the hearing. I, I would be very reluctant to take a heritage tree out, especially one that we do have more time, that has more time seemingly. And to that extent, like in other areas where we've asked for protections for the root system, in other words, not heavy equipment driving over the root systems. And Tom has said in the past that you can remove some of the roots without causing permanent damage. I would actually like to see it preserved. And again, stipulate that there be protective measures for the tree.
I'm not sure that's in our purview, but Mrs. Rice, could you, if you've shown us what you wanted to, could you stop sharing your screen? Thank you. Yes. Mrs. Morris? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I'd like to suggest, I'd like to see is that during the course, when excavation starts and construction starts, if the homeowner could be in touch with Tom and have him periodically come out and just check the tree, the root system itself, and see if at any time during construction, you feel, okay, now it warrants revisiting this. I think that becomes a little bit more, some safeguards, and I think it's a common sense approach.
Yeah, I'm very happy to be in touch with Tom, and Mark knows Tom well. And, you know, Mark obviously has some pretty strong feelings. Mark Secoria from Secoria Tree has some pretty strong feelings about it. And I'm happy to do that. My question, I guess, is this, I'm assuming the liability will be with the town, right? If something like this happens, either because it damages the property or hurts someone, if the whole thing topples over or if a major branch comes crashing down because it really is not safe or is damaged through the construction. I just want to confirm that.
Greg?
Well, it's not automatic liability for the town, depending on the circumstances. You know, acts of God in terms of a very strong wind that comes through, that would not be a situation of our liability. But that is something that is typically litigated as well. It's not a clear cut, yes, we have it, or no, we don't.
Or in the short term, is it tempting to...
Please, Mrs. Rice, would you not speak up without putting up your hand?
Do I apologize?
This is not a discussion between you and us.
Oh.
So put up your hand and wait to be called for, called on.
Okay.
Mrs. Morris?
Jody Morris, 11 Jersey Lane. So one of the things I would ask in a situation like this where this is a heritage tree, it is an oak tree, it's a very long lived tree, it has very deep tack roots. The tree looks to be very healthy. I was wondering whether the homeowner would agree, or maybe they've already done this, whether Secoria has done a level three assessment of this tree, which is generally what you ask for. It's more than looking at the tree, you know, up close. You know, what Tom does, he looks at the crown, he looks at the root system, he looks at, you know, if there's any decay in the trunk and so forth. But a level three assessment, I think, would give both the homeowner and the town more information on whether this tree actually is danger.
Mrs. Rice, I'm sorry I cut you off. Now you may respond to Mrs. Morris.
Hold on one second. I've forgotten how to raise my hand with all these people in here. Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm not familiar with what that kind of assessment is. And I obviously don't know what the expense is that that entails. So at this point, I can't really answer the question. I'm certainly happy to look at it. But yeah, I'm not familiar with what that kind of assessment is.
Perhaps the friends of trees could...
I don't know what, I don't know what a level three assessment costs. I don't think if, you know, if Mark Secoria is on your property and doing work there, I'm sure that's something he could give you a price to do. And I think it would be a smart thing to do in any event, given this, the importance of this tree.
Well, the tree, as I understand it, is on town property, right? I mean, would that be the town's responsibility to do?
I don't know.
So, yeah, I mean, if you think of that...
If Tom and the board feels that that would be a prudent step, we could, we could have that done.
Further comments?
The other question, I have to raise my hand, sorry.
Yep, go ahead, please.
I apologize. The other, I guess, thing is if it, right now, is not, if it's voted to not take it down, does the town, would the town consider maintaining it and getting rid of all of the dead stuff that's on there now and cutting it back in such a way that it's not overhanging the house where the dead branches are?
Tom, is that something?
Oh, I certainly think it would warrant some pruning. It could make it safe. The way the situation is, is sometimes, she referred to the town being liable. I have a Tree Wardens Forests book that has many, many cases of situations. And it's when the town fails to do anything to correct measures is when the precedent has sided against the town. Many cases in my manual book, just for examples. And I'm not a legal expert in any manner, but trees are special things. Many things come under the, you will see in these cases referred to as acts of God. Like, and I know Greg is familiar with it. But I don't see why we couldn't, we could get an estimate to do an evaluation by an independent arborist. My position is that I'm in here for the town to protect and save as many trees as I can. And tree removal specialists and contractors are in a position of something else. Anne knows very well, she saved several large oak trees that are leaning much more on her property. And we all have our feeling towards them. But I'm here to try and advise you how to save as many moderately healthy to fairly healthy trees. There are very, very few trees in town or any other towns that don't have minor fungal issues on their trunks. Oaks are common to it. Oaks are normally very deep rooted, strong trees. That tree is grown that way because it's reaching for the southerly quadrant. It was obviously crowded by big elm trees that were on the other side of the road. That's why it's sort of all a balance. But we certainly could do things that would improve its condition. And like I said, there's no guarantees if we have hurricanes. I've been through many, many hurricanes and seen trees down all over town. Do we want to take all these street trees down that have some minor issues with pruning, little bit of decay, scars on their trunks? There's very, very few. And the homeowner is directed what she, this issue she's pointed out. But I don't feel they're over extensive, if I can qualify it that way.
Yes.
We look at it in the spring, see how it leaves out. I'd be willing to go over and watch the construction, and the contractor could be advised to take as many necessary precautions as they can without running heavy equipment over that side of the tree.
The woman in the red.
Pardon me, but one question on the street. I would like to say, I would just like to see the tree preserved because of its age, its, you know, history. We've lost a lot of trees, three trees to be exact, three large trees in our yard. And I would just hate to see another large tree be lost, you know, in the neighborhood or in town anywhere.
Thank you. Further comments?
Just that that tree is really special. And I've been walking past that tree every day for like 20 years. And I love that tree. So I would like to see it preserved. It's 3 Powderhouse Lane.
I mean, you just have, it's for the record.
Yeah, yeah, so, Rachel Rody, R O T E G. Yeah, I just love that tree very much.
Okay. Now I think we've heard evidence on that tree. The next is at, an 18-inch locust at 7 Bridge Street. Tom?
Yeah, that's a live, healthy locust tree. It did have a few issues in the past with erupting the sidewalk. That was fixed by the town. It's a nice shade tree, young, healthy shade tree, probably been in 30 or 40 years. And I would prefer to see the tree remain.
Thank you.
It's extremely healthy, practically.
So I think the homeowner mentioned that there were vines that were encroaching.
Oh, is this the ash tree or the locust tree?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, no, that's...
Locust. This is the locust.
We're on the locust. It's a big ash tree that has the vines.
Oh, okay, fine.
Oh, is this the Bridge Street one that's got vines? Oh, yeah, it does have you on this vine. It's all entwined all around it. Which could be, we could, we could cut them off. I'm sure the town, some of the town could probably take care of it some point. All I see with them being there is they're obstructing the view down the road and the view on the sidewalk, maybe a little safety issue there that the vines are hanging out over the sidewalk. But I don't see any evidence of it damaging the wall. It's a locust tree that was commonly planted 30, 40 years throughout town, but very healthy tree.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Josh Anderson from Fort Bennett Street. That's on the other side of Bridge Street, right there. So, yes, the concerns I had were the vine encroaching onto the fence that I just had to replace. And the tree also encroaches into the sidewalk, and it's adjacent to a utility pole, which, you know, I've seen kids riding by where they have to go onto the street. And that part of Bridge Street is right where the motorcycles crank it up on the way onto Beverly Farms. I know I've seen them, the town pruning to get the 25 mile an hour sign visible sometimes. And maybe, maybe just additional pruning is enough. I'm no tree expert. I just know that it's, I've had to pull big ones off of our and our neighbor's cable wires in the past because in storms, they've fallen down. And the root system, actually, if you have to maybe look a little closer at the stone wall, the root system has disrupted a bunch of that stone wall, which is a retaining wall holding up my property. So those are the concerns I had. If there's a way to do it without fully removing them, that's fine. But it just... Oh, and it's also scraping on the top of our house, which we didn't notice until we finished the renovation because we couldn't see that part of our house before, and now we can. And it's kind of creepy when it's windy out at night, especially around Halloween.
I assure you, there are no goblins trying to come out of that.
It's not what it felt like.
Comments on the board?
Yeah, I walked by that house today. My notes here were that it looked very healthy, a healthy tree, but it is intruding on the wall foundation and needs to be pruned away from the house. Those are the notes I took when I... So I agree, it definitely needs some pruning. I'm not sure what to do about the wall foundation, how deeply it's penetrated into the wall foundation.
I think we could certainly prioritize the pruning there.
Yeah.
Do some pruning. But my feeling is it's the only nice shade tree on that side of the road as you leave town aesthetically as a little... But there are things we could do to improve its condition. If we see, we could, the homeowner can certainly come back to us. I'll supervise the pruning. If I see structurally damaging the wall, we have a lot of situations like that where trees were planted as young trees, and they do eventually reach the wall. But it's one of the prices we have to pay in urban settings to have nice shade trees like we do in the interest of. We certainly can move it up on the list as a situation where the homeowner has brought it to our attention and he has valid concerns. I don't dispute that at all. But I prefer to try to save the tree as long as we can.
Yes.
Skyler Rody, 3 Powderhouse. So what I'm hearing is this tree is more of a monument, and the vines are more of the... So what I'm hearing is this tree is more of a monument and the vines are more of the problem. So if it's really a healthy tree, then why disrupt it? Because the walls can be fixed. It can, but the tree can't. So if it's really that grave a tree, then I'd say leave it.
Thank you. Yes.
Carly Cutler Mask and All. I was also piggybacking on what Skylar just said about the vines. If possible, maybe you could start with like removing the problem of the vines. Then that would open up, start at the bottom, cut all the, kind of, if you really wanted to, you could wait until they all die and then just pull them down easily instead of spending, you know, the time and money to, I mean, you could do either or, but just starting with the vine problem and then evaluating from there would be my recommendation.
Sorry.
Certainly, I'll just set her hand up as well.
I have been neglecting the board, so.
Okay. Yeah. Walk through that. The vines are the problem with being unable to pass on the, on the walkway. I mean, a tree of that size, there aren't any branches 10, 15 feet from the ground. I mean, that's, that's a big tree. So I agree, Tom, your comment, trimming in particular, starting with the vines. I think that'll straighten out a big chunk of the problem. In that fact, maybe, maybe the vines go up so far as that's part of the roof problem as well, where the branches are brushing against the roof. The vine may go up that high. But I certainly agree that vines are a big part of that and then whatever trimming needs to be done. And I think we'll see how it looks.
I mean, he certainly would give his house proper clearance, you know.
Yeah.
Remove, even if it's a major branch, so he doesn't have to worry about that for 15, 20, 25 years. But, yeah, I had to cut my way through just to post the sign. Yeah, but you watch this, it'd be very impressive. A lot of people think vines damage trees. Some are saprophits. They do feed off the tree. But in this particular case, it's just, you know, I've seen them girdle young saplings. But we could, we could make the situation better and I think work with the homeowner on this.
Okay.
I would like to point out that with all the discussion we're having, we are talking about ways to help the tree and help all of us. And I think that's the approach we should be taking with most of our trees is how can we preserve such a valuable resource? But yet not leave potential hazards when we can mitigate those. And I certainly understand, I live in a house surrounded by a lot of big trees, most of which are pines, so. But I, I just think it's really nice that, that people are thinking of ways to preserve the trees and, and try to satisfy as best we're able. And that we have Skylar who came and joined us today and has spoken up. That's great.
Oh, just one other thing I'd ask. Oh, sorry, Josh Anderson, Fort Bennett Street. Thank you. I just, one other thing to ask is to pay, if you pay close attention in the pruning to the utility wires because it's pretty wrapped around there as well. Both the ones that go along Bridge Street and the ones that cut through my yard to my house and to our neighbor's houses. That's, I feel those, I know those wires are risks because I've gone out there and pulled big branches off of them. So to the extent we can make sure that that's addressed as well, that would be terrific.
Thank you.
Are there any?
Sarah Malish.
Sarah Malish, yes.
Thank you, Sarah Malish, 11 Bennett. I overlooked this tree. And I've been watching it for a couple of years. And there's not a whole lot of leaf cover at the top. And it's really an ugly tree. But, and the other thing is, so I don't think it's in as good a shape as people are saying. And the other thing is I walk along Bridge Street multiple times a day. And despite the fact that residents have complained to the town about trimming back those vines, it doesn't happen. It covers the 20 mile per hour speed limit. And it's very difficult to maneuver on that sidewalk without going on Bridge Street, which is something I wish not to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We've covered that tree. The next one is on Willmorton and Pleasant Street, a 30-inch ash. Tom?
Yeah, that's the big ash that I was, yeah. I think you've all seen that and pretty much aware. And I told you, it's unfortunately doomed.
Okay. Further comments on that tree? It's on Willmorton, but the actual property is on Pleasant.
I see, has her hand up?
Yes.
Or Bruce, I'm not sure if it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Yes, Beth, I see. And Bruce wanted to be here, but he can't be here. We live across the street from that tree. And I'm glad to hear that you're saying that, well, hopefully that it won't be taken down because we really feel that it is, it is a hazard. Couple of weeks ago, a large branch fell right next to my daughter's car. And it's just, it's not this, if 50% of the tree weed out then, I don't think it did for this past summer. And it's, it's just been declining for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. That was, that was with regard to the seven, oh, this is.
The 18 inch ash.
No, this is the ash, okay. At Seven Arbella, a 14-inch locust. Tom?
Yeah, I can't say too much other than it's extremely healthy tree, shade tree in the, in the little strip between the sidewalk and the street. It had some sidewalk issues initially, but they don't, there's no evidence of it right now. Like a lot of trees like that around town, very healthy, rapidly growing trees. It needs pruning again to keep it away from the house. But this is a situation where that type of tree, I could never support removal.
I think the homeowner reported that there were, that there was paving and a tripping hazard.
Yes. Tina Stanley from Seven A Arbella. And on our community walkway, which is our neighbors and us, you can see the tree root is bringing up the pavement on the walkways. It's a somewhat of a tripping hazard. Is the tree on our property or is it on the town property? Let's be more clear on that.
It's probably on their property, but within that zone of the tree policy.
Okay, so it'll be up to us to throw it in?
Yes, if it's, if it's affecting the walkway that's on your property, whether you prune the tree or, or do some root pruning and, and fix the sidewalk, I would try and work with Tom and others about how to mitigate the hazards.
Yeah, and one quick comment, that would be more the DPW because they just did extensive sidewalk there. So the conditions may have changed. There's a whole new sidewalk there, isn't there now?
Yeah.
This is on their, this is on their property. It's not the street sidewalk.
Yeah. The part that's on the, on her property, she's concerned about the roots.
I think they want to take advice about how to deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On their, their property.
Those roots can be removed. They rarely affect locust trees. They're extremely, vitality of them is very, very great. You could take the root right out, cut it if it's a bad one that's going underneath the new. Is it paving stone walkway or paved walkway or gravel? Yeah, very easy to remove the roots, yeah. Won't affect the health of the tree at all.
Yes, sir.
John Hannah, Seven A Arbella. What about pruning any of the branches that are hanging over the, is it, can that be, is that up to us? Can we do that?
Certainly, within, within our limits. We can move it up. That's really the DPW that determines when trees get you, what, like I say, as long as we take some action and don't put it off too long. Once we're notified, if it is chafing on his shingles and wearing his shingles, certainly that's a concern which we should address with pruning.
You will put that up on the, right?
Yeah.
The town will take care of the dead branches. But I think the private sidewalk would be more your. So I think that's sort of the compromise. We take care of the branches, you take care of the sidewalk.
I mean, I'd be willing to go over and show them just exactly what to do, you know. It shouldn't be much expense at all. I've done it myself. We're a huge tree that grows into my driveway and things, but I have a gravelly driveway. We can also thin it out a little bit if you want a little more light through there. But I wouldn't be concerned about it for another 20, 30 years of whether, you know, will it encroach on your house that much? But we can make things better for you certainly, tree wise. And I'll show you what to do with you. Any good landscape guy knows, has done this in the past when they've actually put patios. I actually had to do it on a large maple tree in my backyard, take out several roots and then put down a stone patio.
Jeffrey Draperboy has his hands.
Go ahead.
I think he's unmuted.
Hi, this is Jeff McAvoy from Seven D Arbella Street. I'd just like to make about this particular tree. I know you just said you think 20 years before it's going to encroach on the house. I'd like to remind you that we've pruned this tree back from the house twice in the past four years. The tree's also a maintenance nightmare. It continually drops a great deal of debris all over the sidewalk where they do drop off children for school every day. I have to run a leaf blower, two cycle gas leaf blower, for about two hours a week just to clean up after this thing. This is spring, this is fall. It's constantly dropping something. The roots are extremely invasive. In addition to lifting up the sidewalk, I had a 30-foot long root coming straight across along the surface of the grass through my garden. The tree is 10 feet away from the house. I think you know that the, the growing habit of these trees is extremely erratic. It's rapid. It's hanging over the driveway, it's hanging over the house, it's hanging out over the street. It's been pruned a number of times. It's, the, the main branch that heads towards the house is about two thirds of the entire mass of the tree. So if I cut that back, there's not much left. I mean, this tree, I, I don't really understand the, you know, the value of this tree. I, I would happily plant, you know, a, a much nicer tree, a more appropriate tree. This is a tree that's not even, I mean, no one's planting these things in Massachusetts anymore. They're not native to the area. And it's, you know, it's, it's considered an invasive tree in many parts of the country. That's all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the board with further comments?
Sandy, has her hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we've lost a couple of trees across the street in the cemetery. So, you know, it's nice to keep that for shade. And I would say, see what can be done and, you know, keep assessing it. And stay on top of the, the pruning and, you know, give it a chance in, in a couple of years if it's really getting more invasive, reassess. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing to comment, the final.
I'd like.
Go ahead.
Yeah, he just puts his hand up.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I understand you lost some Norway maples across the street that are also an invasive tree. But I don't understand how that affects this tree. I mean, who, who's the shade benefiting? It's in front of my house, it's in front of my neighbor's house. I really don't see why, I, I don't know. I, I don't see how, how trees that were taken down in the cemetery have any bearing on this. The town does nothing to maintain the things that fall from this tree. I, I mean, does nothing to, to fix the damage that the roots are causing. And as far as the tree being on our property, I, I'm not sure that that's entirely true. I think the property line wants to be the trunk of the tree. So I mean, if you'd like to do some more to, you know, help out with this thing, I, I really would appreciate it. But at the same time, I really don't see the benefit of this tree to anyone. Other than it's a nuisance to me and the people that live at my house. I don't see the benefit of this tree to anyone. And if you think that the tree is good for the environment, like I said, I'm running a two-cycle gas leaf blower to keep up with this thing. You know, this tree is a nuisance.
Thank you. Oh, yes, please.
Skylar Rhodey, Three Powder House Land. I actually, at my school, my middle school, the track team actually goes to the cemetery. So in the horror months, the trees keep them shaded while water breaks and, you know. So it's helping the community by having younger people running, so keep it shaded.
Thank you. There any? Okay. The last tree, and we are already overdone, is a 10-inch Norway maple of Newman Cemetery. The, the note said it was encroaching on a fence, it's encroaching on a wall.
Just, I agree with the project they have in process. We have a tree that's not really a benefit to anything near. The other trees that we have planted in the cemetery won't do better with it gone. It's going to create a problem maybe with the new wall, I'm not sure. But it has a fissure in the trunk. And as you can see, it's probably a volunteer that sprouted on its own. That's definitely my determination. I see no, as long as we, every tree we take down, we plant something somewhere in town to, to compensate for what we're losing.
Are there any other comments? Sorry, are there any comments from the board on the tree at Newman Cemetery? Okay, any comments from the other? Okay, I would consider a motion to close the evidentiary portion.
Someone?
Someone.
We'll call vote, Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Anne says yes.
Okay. At this point, we will vote individually on if it's. The tree, the 30-inch sugar maple across from 38 Norwood, which is substantially dead.
Motion to remove?
Second.
We'll call vote. Becky?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy? Brian, you know, one of those men things.
Kathy, yes.
Anne says yes.
I'll say yes again.
Okay. Okay. The next is the 10-inch spruce at 28 Norwood in the grassy area near the fountain that Coach Field field.
Motion to keep. To deny the removal.
Second. President of session. Ready for vote? Becky?
Yes.
John?
You out.
Kathy?
I didn't vote yet.
He didn't vote, he didn't. Brad, go ahead, please.
Now I don't think, don't think I want to. Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
And I'll say yes again.
Okay. 117 School Street, the 30-inch ash.
Motion to remove. Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Anne says yes. 23 Old Neck Road. And here, I think we may want to have a recommendation, some recommendations in addition to just the decision.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to keep the tree to request a level three assessment quote, which we will review at a future meeting date. And Tom, I think you are also going to trim the tree as it stands now, independent of the assessment. Or maybe you want to wait for the assessment.
Yeah. If we can get the pruning in in this wintertime, we can do that possibly. We'll see. It still needs pruning.
All right, so the pruning.
I think they've made a request about falling branches there again. We've been informed, so.
All right, so the pruning.
You need to do something is, you know, within a few months, I would say.
The pruning will, will proceed independent of the level three assessment. We, we will, I don't know if you put in. We will, I don't know if you put in for that or you do that, Greg?
I'll work with PFW and Tom.
Thank you.
I don't know if you wanted to mention construction measures during construction.
The homeowner's responsibility, keep in touch with Tom and bring him in at appropriate times to take a look.
And if possible, to, if I may make a friendly amendment. Greg, do we, can we ask that the tree be protected from heavy equipment running over it, over the roots?
Maybe that construction protection.
Yep.
Excuse me, I don't know how that's possible, where the construction is going to be and where the excavation is going to be. And the plans have been approved by the town.
Well.
They concern the drive, obviously, they're right for it.
What we normally do is when the excavation is done, the exercises, we've had this situation before on Vine Street. Before they backfill, we take a look, try to avoid if they encounter something that they have to cut, right? What I'm saying is, try not to, with a huge backhoe, come too close to the tree and fracture anything. To me, somewhere in that vicinity, it appears that there's a gas line and a water line staked out. So I'm sure they're going to exercise caution relatively close to it. My concern would be heavy, fully-loaded dump trucks passing within ten, twelve, fifteen feet of the trunk of the tree. That would be abnormal. And most contractors have always cooperated with us in development. For instance, in Creole Hill and other areas of newer developments that have been here for only fifty years. If you speak to the contractor, they're usually very cooperative in trying to help the tree. Especially if we let them know that we have concerns about it and it is a average tree.
At the moment, we have a motion, which I'm not sure I could.
It has, I think it has four considerations to it. That we keep the tree, that you proceed with a trimming as appropriate in a reasonable amount of time here. I guess you said before the winter really sets in. That we conduct a level-three assessment. The town, that the town gets a quote in for a level-three assessment, at which time we will probably have you come back in, Tom, to take a look at that or get your comment. And that the homeowner be in touch with you when construction kicks in for advice at the appropriate time. And was there anything else?
I think those are the four. I just would like Greg to clarify the wording regarding the construction. That there it's, what did you, there was, the term you used, the construction.
Oh, construction.
Protection, yeah.
Protective measures are taken.
I just want to make sure that wording is in there.
Protective measures taken in.
I've seen them sometimes wrapped with slating or rubber ties. Greg knows well more than me about it. But I'm sure if you see the sites, I've seen them over the years many times. They can use protection if they want to and they're made aware of it.
I'll second that motion.
Value the tree.
Ready for a vote? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Kathy says yes? Brian says yes?
Yes.
And Becky?
It's kind of like Match Game.
Becky says yes.
Okay. Seven Bridge Street, which is the eighteen-inch locust with the Yowana's problem. Is there a motion?
I move to deny removal and keep the tree. And also, this rest of the town, prune the tree away from the house and clear as many vines as feasible.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay, the next is the thirty-inch ash.
Motion to remove the tree on the corner of Wilmonton and Pleasant.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay, the fourteen-inch locust at Seven Arbella. Is there just discussion before we have a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
May I make a friendly amendment? Just that in addition to not removing the tree, also have the town. Tom, you can advise them on removing the roots? That are, or root that is disturbing the sidewalk, as well as advise on pruning? Or is that something that Greg, you'll go ahead and talk to Chuck about?
I think, maybe Sean and I could go over and look at the tree together and come to some, what we need to do, how much, how heavy we need to prune it away and what the, which roots need to be removed so it won't further interrupt their walkway.
Second. Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Becky?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
John says yes. And finally, on Union Cemetery, the ten-inch probably volunteer Norway maple. I move that we remove that tree.
Good.
Discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
John says yes. Thank you, everyone who came for the tree hearing. It's been, I know it's hard when people don't agree with you. But we're trying to do our best and I hope that your situation will be better after we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Closing, no, let's, we did, we closed.
We closed the public.
So technically, you closed the hearing.
Welcome.
That was supposed to be me.
Okay. Please.
Do we close the?
Let's, also, we closed the evidentiary portion, which may or may not oppose the whole thing. But let's have a motion to, I make a motion to. Speak here.
Second.
Okay.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sorry, John.
Anne says yes? I forgot.
And I say yes.
Okay.
John can have yours.
Okay, the next on our agenda is Sean Masterson talking about Parks and Rec. And do we have any questions? Does the board have questions for Sean?
I do.
What a surprise.
I am, I am. First of all, thank you very much for offering up your time and expertise. I just, do you feel, do you have an idea of what the time commitments are? And that, because I know you've been speaking with, was it Cheryl? And just, do you have the time to put into it?
Yeah, it's a very good question. Thanks for asking. You know, I think one's civic duty is very important to me and my wife. We have two little kids, so it'll take extra commitment certainly. But we're both really committed to doing our part as citizens of the town. And so she has opted to work with the voting process here in town. And I, when Oga approached me, I thought quite a bit about whether this was the right opportunity to give back. And I think it is, given my interest in the subject matter and my background. And I think that I can make time for something that's important. I'm sure it will be, you know, more of a commitment than I even anticipated, but I'm looking forward to it. So, yeah, I think the answer is yes, I'm ready for it.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Well, I was attending during the show, so, and I think we sat through some of the issues. Typical. Typical bothers there when you're. So I'm satisfied.
Kathy? Yeah, I think your qualifications are excellent and thank you very much.
That's good. Just a couple of questions. You said Oga approached you, in other words, were you interacting with the committee? Or did, how did you, how did you connect? Did you just decide to raise your hand, which we all thank you for?
So, I have known Oga for some time. When I first moved to Manchester a dozen years ago, I worked with Oga and Eli and a few other folks on Dogs on the Beach, so.
All right, you've seen all the controversy.
And you still want to get further involved.
Surviving.
What side of the beach do you want?
If you know Oga, you probably know what's happening.
Yeah.
But, you know, I kept in touch with Oga and she's asked me a few times about joining committees. And Oga is persistent. Also, I do, to Becky's question, you know, I think my life situation has changed as kids got a little bit older and had a little bit more time. So when she approached me the most recent time, I actually spoke at length with her. And I also spoke with some other folks, like the landscape architect for the Pine Street, about his dealings with the town and Parks and Rec community. So I sort of diligenced the opportunity and what the committee was about. And, you know, my family and I are huge consumers of everything that Parks and Rec offers. And we benefit greatly. And I've also had a chance to observe some of the challenges, you know, that anybody who has to manage the Parks and Rec mandate faces. And so I wouldn't say I was directly involved with Parks and Rec. But, you know, I've sort of been participating and watching and speaking with folks.
Okay, well, thank you very much for volunteering. I mean, one thing that is always a challenge for all the volunteers is your demographic is not particularly well-represented. Because people in your situation have very complex lives. And usually it's that people, when the kids are gone, et cetera, where they say, hey, I've got a little bit of time to do this. So we really appreciate the fact that you've got a front-row seat on feedback in terms of what's happening with a committee such as that. Because you say, as you say, you're a consumer, so thanks.
Well, I move that the select board appoint Sean Masterson to the Parks and Rec Committee for a term to end on June thirtieth, 2025.
Second.
Ready for a vote? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Kathy says yes? Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Absolutely, and thank you.
Thank you, we got it.
All right.
Good luck.
Unless there's anything else, I'm going to go do bedtime now. Thank you.
You would find the rest of this meeting absolutely fascinating.
We'll put you there.
Best report ever, coming up.
Yes. The next thing on our schedule, and we're a little late, is the Winthrop Field Committee update.
I'm Mike Chapman, 131 Bridge Street, the chairman of Winthrop Field Committee. And my mentor here, Sue Thorn, who is also our scribe. And we just wanted to give a quick update. It's been a while since we've been before the board. And we are an advisory committee to the board. And we manage the maintenance for Winthrop Field. If you take a look at the finances, we're in pretty healthy shape. And we're very lucky that the Claire Winthrop Charitable Trust gives us $10,000 every year. Our mowing and baling is about $5,000. And then that gives us a little bit of extra when we have to do some other work. So, no tax money is spent on Winthrop Field. We're lucky to be able to say that. This last year, we did a pretty good construction project, rehabilitating one of the manholes that had been filled in the 1970s, replacing one of the drain lines that was probably original, that goes back to 1896 or so. And it solved some of the problems with the excess water in the western side of the field. And I'm happy to go through on the map what the different pieces and parts are, if you'd like to gory details. But if not, if you want to take a look at the map, we'll show you the three main sections that all drain out to Whittier's Cove behind Tuck Point. The one section by A.J. McGonis's house on the left, from the pond in the center. And then most of our work is being done to the right on the western side of the field.
Oh, it came in today's.
It came in today and.
Ah, nope, that's all right.
In that case.
I'd also like to add that we've had some generous support from the Community Preservation Committee for the steps we have just began to work on the field. We have another application.
And I did bring a little show and tell.
Okay.
So.
It was in a bag.
You know, I got it, it's empty. I want to be sure that you understand that. But that's a piece of the drain pipe that we took out.
Oh, wow.
So that's from 1896.
Wow.
And when they put these in the ground, there's no ceiling in between them. So water flows through the clay pipe, but also in between the pipes and then out through the drain system. So over a hundred years, you can see how all the silt would come in and then that would plug that up. So that's one of our main, one of our main challenges, is to make sure that we can go in, we can clear those out. And when we can't, or if there's a break, then we have to go in and we've got to dig those up and then replace them. So, I don't know if Anne wants to be the holder of the drain pipe, or if Greg does.
I believe Chuck's collecting them over there, so.
Chuck's, okay.
He does have a collection of them.
That looks good.
I'll deliver it over there.
How many feet, did you replace the pipe with a pipe very similar in size? Maybe a different material is.
Yeah, this is, this is about two and a half inches in inside diameter.
Yeah.
And the new one is six inches.
Oh, that's a lot bigger.
Yeah. So what we did was, when we excavated that drain line, we put down crushed stone first, then geotextile, then the perforated PVC, more crushed stone, geotex, crushed stone, and then dirt on top of that. And then reseeded it with the metal mix. So that's a, that's a line that should stay running.
For another hundred years.
For at least another hundred years.
And how many feet did you put in? It's a big field.
It was over a hundred feet. And then the next project is going from one of the manholes that runs up towards Jersey Lane. And it's shown in the dotted line on the diagram. And sections of that have fallen in, there's some sinkholes. And we've had the drain, the drain contractor come up and he gets about six feet up and it's blocked. So we think what we're going to have to do is we'll have to excavate that and then do the same process with the PVC. What we'd like to do, if we can, is put a manhole at the end, so then we have a way to continue to maintain it. The old way of doing this, they just put a pile of rocks at the end, which is what we found when we pulled these up. So, no real concept of how to maintain the drain lines.
Great.
So, any questions?
Your report answered all the questions that I had.
It was very comprehensive and helpful. Thank you very much for putting that together.
And just want to say that, you know, anytime anyone wants to come out to the field, we'll take a walk around, we can show you what's going on. Now is a good time. We just did the second rotary cut. Keeps all the heavy woody weeds down, so it's good to walk in. And we're open 365 days a year for people with dogs.
Doesn't get better.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Did Mike bring any free honey samples?
Do you, are you an atheist?
Yes, we have some beehives. It was a tough year, but there may be a little bit extra, so Chuck, check your mailbox, Chuck. Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Sue.
Okay, um, we have the Facilities Master Plan final report. I'm tempted to suggest that we take the police chief next and come back to the Facilities Plan.
The only problem is that we're ahead of time for that.
We're ahead of time for that.
Wait. No, it's 7:20. The police chief was supposed.
7:55, a couple minutes early.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we have Chuck and Nate on the reserve here.
Yes.
Fine. Okay, sorry. We will go back, we will continue on our original plan, which is to discuss the Facilities Master Plan final report.
So if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Chuck and Nate to give a brief overview.
Fine.
Officially walk you through the summary, the regular summary, and then go into a discussion.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, we were with you guys for the draft probably a month or so ago. So, you know, we tried to incorporate the comments that we heard that night, as well as some other kind of things that we had kind of roughed in. And we sent that back. And so I guess that's what you guys have before you. We do have the consultants from Tetra Tech here again to answer any, you know, specific questions or give any sort of other overview you might need. I guess I'll hand it over to you, Chris.
All right. Good evening, everybody. How is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can't see you anymore, so that's kind of weird all of a sudden. Yeah, so as Chuck was saying, you know, we were there about, you know, five or six weeks ago, and we presented the draft. We took your comments. And we hopefully addressed them all, but we're willing to discuss additional comments. I'm gonna just ask this, because I know it's a small group there. Does anybody want me to go over like a summary of what we talked about last time?
I'd appreciate a Reader's Digest version of what's different.
You got it. Oh, of what's different.
That's just me. Other board members may feel differently. If you want to hit the highlights.
I will indulge you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last comment.
Kathy would like.
You want to hear a little of both?
No, Kathy would like a Reader's Digest version of the changes.
Okay. Well, then I'll skip to, skip to the changes, because I don't mean to belabor it, but I think everybody knows the plan, right, that we suggested? And I'm gonna give away the punchline. Nothing substantial has changed from our recommendations in this report. It really was a matter of, you know, clarifying a lot of things and addressing your comments. But so some of the things, some of the specific comments were based on, basically, you know, presenting an executive summary that was very clear and adding tables and graphics that will help illustrate the points that we were making. And like I said, particularly in the executive summary. So you probably have seen that we basically started over from scratch on the executive summary and added a lot of figures and a lot of tables. Some of the other specific comments that were raised, not necessarily by the board, but in general, were to, that we revised all of the maps and to reflect the Coastal Vulnerability Action Plan, the C V A P Plan, which actually took a lot of effort. I think you'll notice that we tried to address the comment about leasing property versus owning property for a municipality. I think we also tackled the issue of what to do with the fire department. You know, after a public safety building is built and the fire department moves out, you know, there are a few things you can do with the fire department when you get to that point. I believe we expanded a lot about the harbor projects, and specifically how there are grants available to pay for most, if not all, of the capital costs for those projects. And there's certainly, just on that note, there may be other grants out there. Specifically, I heard recently about a potential grant that's going through the legislators right now for actual public safety buildings. I don't know if anybody heard about this, but I guess Melrose has a big issue with their police and fire departments as well. And there is, maybe there's help on the way. But it's something that we will certainly look into as those projects come up. But like I said, most of the changes were editorial, you know, clarifications, addressing your comments, and, you know, tidying up the report and making it a little bit more readable. And, yeah, like I said, I tip my hand. There's not, there are not many huge changes. So if you just want to, we can hear your additional comments and talk them through.
Chris, I'd just like to add, one second before that is, I think you said it great. And I think the thing that I wanted to make sure the board understands, or how we look at things, you know, DPW, myself, and Nate, is that, you know, this will, in my opinion, become more of a living document. So obviously, we know that there are some things on the very short-term horizon that we couldn't maybe address within this report. We have to finalize this report. But, you know, certainly future iterations where we either update the executive summary or we add addendum, because something else has changed, or the, you know, the assumptions or the, just the cards on the table change, you know, we can update our report accordingly. We've done this before on our wastewater plant, where we were looking at, you know, sending flow to Beverly or Gloucester. We also now are looking at, or we have looked at, what it would take to do things within the town. So, you know, just because the scope was one thing when we set out or finish a project doesn't mean that we can't look at it again, you know, on a timely basis, which I think is the intent with any master plan.
Good point, Chuck. Thank you.
So I think just another comment is that with this new version, you know, it really starts off with, as Chris indicated, with that flood mapping and the projections of sea level rise and the impacts that that's likely to have on some critical pieces of infrastructure. So, you know, that figure of 75% of our more critical facilities are all very prone to flooding. And that has become a major driver, I think, of some of these recommendations.
So I have questions?
Yes. Please go ahead.
So I reviewed the report, and I liked it. I think you addressed all of the questions or issues that had come up when we reviewed it a few weeks ago. I did have a couple of questions, and mostly it's the summary. The summary is, kind of includes all of the key issues here. I noticed that with regard to the seawall construction in town, you kind of put together both the town hall and the wastewater treatment plant together as one number. I consider the seawall or some sort of protection for the plant probably at a higher level, or it's more critical, because if things go south with that, we're in bigger trouble than if you've got a flooded first floor here. Can you break that out at all, or was that just kind of conveniently done? Or, because I'd like to see that number, because I might, I would consider pushing that up as a higher priority.
That is an interesting topic. And to answer your question, yes, there were, it is lumped together as one project, but there were two separate costs developed, because the wall going around the town hall will be a little different than the wall that would go around the wastewater treatment plant, as far as its height and its depth. And so there are two different numbers. We certainly could break it out, if that's what you're concerned with, just showing a table, costs.
Yeah, would like to know that. Would like to know that. Second, P P O S. In the first report, you had P P O S over a couple of years in terms of cost, and you consolidated it into one year. Was that, do you know something we don't? Or was that a conscious decision? Or maybe Chuck was an influencer on that, or all of the above?
Yeah, I might have to punt on that one.
So really, we need, you know, whether it goes into, I guess, year two or year three, we generally have to have all that money upfront. So like, say for the, like, a construction project at the water treatment plant, to award that contract, we need it all, you know, you need to have that money in hand. So when we were looking at it as, you know, a pipeline and a treatment plant project, depending on how, you know, I think we can be flexible in how the years lay out, because really that comes down to how the town wants to attack it and fund it. But whether it's a bond or other methods, you know, we kind of need that money, you know, upfront to be able to award contracts. And ideally, we're going the pipeline route. You're doing, you know, say that's a $10 to $13 million project, and you're commencing, you know, kind of working in tandem. You know, that money's gonna be needed to award contracts. So if we wanted to attack it in a different way, where we did a pipeline first, although that is looking not like a viable or a less likely scenario based on some of the lifecycle cost analysis we've received back. But it's really how quickly we want to phase those projects. And I think the thought was, if we're going that big, we're bonding a project.
So right now, you're putting both the pipe and the process at the treatment plant, both kind of in the same bucket going in parallel?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I understand that. Was the, with regard to the safety building, was Sixth School Street, which is not on the market or anything, it's just a private place, was that part of the previous report, or did that kind of just appear here?
It was in the previous report.
Was it? I couldn't remember.
As a property not for sale.
Right, right.
And if I may, just something we might consider is asking the owners for a right of first refusal.
I think that's smart. That's not necessarily within the scope of this, but it's, I think for them and also for Fifty Summer, they should know that we're interested.
Right, potentially.
Yes, because these things are still a few years out, and things can happen. And that's correct. And the only other thing, the Maritime Center was on the initial timeline. It's not here. Is that largely because monies aren't necessarily involved in planning for that, one way or the other?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Near term. It may not be something we need to do near term anyway, but.
Well, it's not so much something that you don't need to do near term. It's just that it was a smaller project, and it, and there are, there are designs in the process already for those projects. So we decided to simplify the table and just stick to the large, critical projects.
Right.
But it still should, you know, still should be thought about and put on. And I mean, one of the things about the revisions is a lot of those projects can be fully funded by grants. I mean, why not move forward?
Okay, I'm just trying to recall. Wasn't it the end of the last time we got together on this, we did go ahead with the design, or authorized the design of the maintenance of the Maritime Center?
No.
No. Do not believe so.
Okay.
Pushful thinking, yes. I thought because it was funded, the thought was that it was, could be fully funded that we authorized the design of the.
We have talked about one of these before.
Oh, okay, so I thought we had done that.
Proceed.
Just in case I'm off someplace else, what is the Maritime Center?
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master with.
So public restaurants.
Sounds right, right, right.
It seems as if there may be an altered solution for that.
Correct.
Something we would need to put in shower, a shower.
Well, from what I understand is that as long as there's showers and laundry for voters, that's how we qualify for federal grants.
So just a comment on the grants. There are pros and cons, right? The pros are, it's money, our state tax dollars, right, coming back to the town. That's the pro. The con is that it can lead us to a larger or more expensive facility than we might otherwise build. And I would just ask us to temper, to remember that, because the grants pay for the construction. They don't pay for the ongoing maintenance, I believe. Is that correct?
Which correct.
Okay, so, yeah, it's nice to get money, okay? But if you're building a much bigger facility, whether it's a marine center or a public safety building or a school, you know, you are often, what I witness, is towns building bigger things. And over time, that has increased operational cost. So I just think we can't forget that. My, as I said it when we discussed this report a month ago, I said it was one of the best reports I've seen on Facilities Master Plan. Good level of detail, you know, really well done and thorough. Some of the feedback I had given, I think, was partially implemented. I asked for a separation of needs and wants, okay? And I did see a table in here, a high level.
Sort of critical, not.
Yeah, so that was a good first step at the facilities level. Here are the facilities issues that, you know, no matter what happens, these are our needs. We've got to do these, and then the other ones were wants. So I think that was a really good first step. What I really want to better understand, and this may get into the, more of the design phase rather than the master plan, but it's just a comment that I'll make now, is in each of these upfront sections where you say facilities need, section 2.0, okay? I believe my comment the last time was, not all of these are needs, okay? And they are not. If I just, I'm gonna, I'm open to 2.0, 2.1, okay? The DPW. There are excellent things on this list that are, you know, needs. The maintenance garage, the lifts, you know, all that stuff. There are some things in here that are wants. Additional covered indoor vehicle storage needed for pickup trucks and smaller vehicles. Do you have a garage?
No, but this is a.
But hang on, let me finish my comment. Let me finish my comment. We walk outside this building, and there are a lot of people with single-family homes or live in multi-family homes, and their vehicles don't have garages. So what I'm asking us to remember is how this all looks to the people who have to pay for it. Administrative office space. I think what I mentioned the last time was, a growing organization needs more administrative office space. That's typically when you need more. If your organization is not growing, then what is the need for additional office space? So I'm just, I'm just.
May I interrupt on that particular note?
Yes.
Currently, the DPW office is next door.
Yes.
It would be better to have the people running the DPW at the DPW.
Partially, yes. Not necessarily completely.
They want more space, but that they want space.
I understand that. No, I understand that. And if I could just finish my comment, I do understand that. And like I said, I've done a lot of these, so I do, truly, I do understand that. What I'm getting at, though, is Greg, I think I'm looking to you, okay? This isn't Chuck's job to push back on facilities requirements discussions, okay? There's always a healthy tension in any organization when discussing facilities, whether they be new or major renovations, because they're so expensive. So there's usually one belly button in the organization who pushes back and helps really refine what's a want versus a need. And that's not Chuck's job. Other than you, I don't know whose job it is. But I think that's an important piece of the next level of detail as we go through and work out, you know, what, how much we want to pay for these buildings, et cetera.
Right, I think that is the next iteration.
It's the next iteration.
It's part of this document.
I, I'm just bringing it up because it's under a section that says needs. And some of these things, you could argue, are wants. So that's one comment I have. The other comment I have is, it feels like under the recommendation section, it feels like putting the Public Safety Center on Pleasant Street is a done deal. And I don't think it is. Because we just had a presentation, you know, not long ago from the affordable housing community who, I believe the town voted at one point that they were open to having affordable housing be there when the DPW moves. So I just feel like we haven't talked about that, and that's not a done deal. So to Chuck's comment about this being a living document, that I do agree with. Because I'm a little concerned about how the wording here could be misinterpreted. That we've made this decision, we're going to take the police and fire and put it on Pleasant Street. Ah, I don't think we've had that discussion yet. So that was my, my bigger concern around this. But like I said, overall, very well done. But I do think, given the amount of money we're talking about here, the next set of conversations are really, really important.
Can I just give a quick response, Kathy?
Yeah, please.
That all makes a lot of sense. And we're happy to, you know, have those conversations again in the future. I think that, you know, the comment on Pleasant Street, I was actually in the room last time when the Housing Authority came in. And although, you know, I think they're hopeful that there might be something there. And I'm not opposed to, you know, reconstituting our plan or, again, amending it if needed. I would say that, from my perspective, it seems like the Housing Authority has not done a similar level of effort, report, or even a lesser level of effort on sort of available parcels and stuff. And I think, I would like to have a conversation with the Housing Authority at a upcoming, one of their meetings or your meetings or something, where, you know, maybe they need to review our plan and look at, you know, where are the similarities? Or, you know, other opportunities that they might have. Because I think there were a few, without getting into specifics, that, you know, we had looked at in terms of town facility master plan that maybe were less applicable to, you know, public safety or DPW, but maybe are more applicable to, you know, small plots of housing, which seems to be something that the town obviously wants. But also, it seems like the smaller plots are more feasible. So I think that's a thing.
I think it's an excellent suggestion. And my reason for bringing up that particular issue, it is a very high-level issue. And, you know, depending on how much acreage is on Pleasant Street, you know, maybe you can do a little bit of both, you know? I mean, maybe the public safety piece can be a little smaller, you can squeeze in some housing. So I just, it just felt a little bit too, like there was a one solution offering instead of.
Yeah.
So that was my main concern. I don't want it to be misinterpreted that we've made some final decisions.
Yeah, I mean, so again, and I think you said it, it's hard for us in our role to, you know, incorporate every nuance. And I think this is kind of some of the nuances that we would need to get to in a, even your comment, you know, regarding needs and wants with, you know, a specific facility, DPW or any of the other ones that are mentioned in the report. I think, you know, we will have to get to a preliminary design that, you know, maybe vets out all of those things at a much more detailed level. And then, you know, get to the next stages of design. But I think for the purposes of facility master plan, it's, you know, it's hard to kind of waffle back and forth on this. Because if I had done the opposite and said, you know, we don't need any covered storage, then there wouldn't be a report that said you need covered storage or whatever. So it's hard to, you know, kind of thread that needle. But I think, I think we're on the same page there.
I agree. And I just think it's about how we ask the questions. Because once we publish a facilities master plan that says, oh, we think we're going to do something for $20 million, what's the likelihood of a contractor coming in here and saying they're going to do it for 15, right? So these documents have repercussions. And I just hope that when we get to that phase of design or bidding, whatever the phases are, we ask them, what can you do for 15? So we get that answer, yeah.
So I think the way we handle that typically, and again, I won't get into all the detail. But we always look at sort of what is the minimum threshold? And then what is, you know, if we have extra money, where do we spend it? And so those are, when we do our bidding and, you know, we get there, it's more of a, you know, additional things in the, additive bids, we call them, or alternate bids. So it's, you know, you could get into that level of detail on, you know, pretty much anything. You know, whether or not you do solar panels on the roof or, you know, a different outbuilding or, you know, all those sorts of things are kind of on the table when you get to that level. But I don't think we can address each individually in a master plan.
Thank you, Chuck. Becky?
I think it's also very important for us to look at this and not chip away at the little things that are not, or potentially may not really greatly affect the budget, but can enhance the work environment for the employees or whomever is there. But again, this is not a document that's saying this has to be how it's done. It's more guidance and.
I would add, Becky, I think that's a good point. And something that we did want to mention is that, you know, pretty much everything within this master plan is only helping us serve the town and the residents better. So certainly, there's, you know, there's a price and a cost to all that. But this is not something that we went into lightly. Like, it's not the, you know, it's not the Chuck Dan, you know, whatever. It's, you know, this is for the town.
Well, and the town has been letting us know that they want us to put thought and.
Into future projects.
Absolutely. Into future projects, especially public safety. I mean, that's, that's a town priority, or seems to be for many of the people.
Nice, I think, in the future, if we could integrate, at least have discussions integrating this with other town priorities. We have a housing problem, we have an affordable housing problem, and we have an elementary school coming up.
Right.
And as we lay out a timeline, I wouldn't expect a facilities report to include an elementary school in another town. But it's a significant issue that's coming up. And I wouldn't expect a facilities plan to solve the question of how do we get to 10% affordable housing. But that's something else we've got to do. And so maybe we need to take a step back on this plan and just integrate more of the town space.
Integrated into the master plan, right?
That is the master plan.
But that's what I'm saying. It's like, this is a new piece. And the master plan hasn't been looked at since before the pandemic. So integrating this new information is how you keep it fresh. Yeah, it's a good point. Is there anything?
I would just like to say that we can keep, we're just studying this and studying this and studying this. And we've been studying this for, I've heard, eight, 10 years now. We've got to, we've got to pull the trigger at some point. And we know where the first, the first stone is, is DPW.
DPW. There's DPW, there's also the wastewater treatment plant, which is going to be an increasing. And this plan does address incremental improvements in the safe, in the security of the wastewater treatment plant.
So I guess my point is, when do we decide?
Well, what's the next step? Are you asking what's the next step?
I want to know, I've been hearing about the DPW site for a couple of years now. And it seems like we're going to wait a couple more months at this point, as opposed to saying, let's get started with one study anyway, at least the design. And we know we're at 10 years out. And we know we're looking at $100 million, thereabouts. Okay? Let's do it in phases. Let's get started.
Is there any reason not to move this final draft forward?
I'm sorry, is there any reason?
I'm asking if board members, if there's any reason not to move this final draft forward at this point.
When you say forward, in other words, post it?
Approve the final report.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we approve it with a caveat, it is a living document. And not choose, this is not the commandments we're talking about here. This is a living document and new information comes in and it gets changed.
And the understanding that this is the first step.
Yeah.
We're not even, now we start looking at design, at least for the first phase, which would be.
I think the question is, what is the logistics-wise, what's the next step? Right. We, let's say we approve this final draft, what is, what's the next step?
So it really gets into the capital plan, the five-plus-year capital plan, and which, which of these recommendations do you want to start funding? And I think the DPW facility is the first one to start funding.
That's the lunchpin right there.
It is, it's the, can't do anything without that.
Right, in addition to moving forward on the super plan.
There was a nice chart on the public safety, different towns and what they've paid. I didn't see that for the, was everyone in there for DPW? Because I didn't remember seeing that.
Just with the safety building.
Fortunately, there's not as much data out there on the DPWs. They come after police and safety usually.
And again, this is guidance, we can always ask for that information.
I mean, I think to get it in a capital plan, I'm sorry.
Rockport was one of the more recent DPW facilities that might be a good measuring stick. It's being constructed now. We're still looking for comparable DPW facilities, or something there and abouts. And honestly, we did use those costs as a, as a, as one of the many gauges in developing the cost for a new DPW facility as well.
You said Bush Town, and I missed it.
Yeah, you did.
Rockport?
It was Rockport, Rockport, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Yes.
I moved this like, we're approving the final report of the facility master plan.
Second.
Discussion, Becky?
Kathy, did you want to make that, the friendly amendment that it be noted it is a?
No, that's fine.
Ricky?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Your answer is yes.
John, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Awkward, you'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, it's all right.
All righty.
Two quarterly reviews, so please. Fire chief, because he's been sitting here waiting longer, even though the fire chief has been littering outside.
You got my memo, I assume?
Yes.
Yes.
Once I stop writing, I can't stop, so it's like.
We noticed that. You also got your shopping.
Yeah, yeah. I did print out the budget information. Sorry, I didn't include it, I dropped copies of it. This is through 1014 when I did it last.
Thank you.
So as I put in my memo, the overtime has decreased since FY '23. At this point last year, we were about 88.41% of our OT line. And it was spent and the extra staff that we have on, we're down to 44.66, which is a 43.75 decrease in overtime spending. Overall, in the budget, we're down about, maybe about a percent in the core from this time last year. I didn't include that in those numbers, but I will next time. So is there any other questions?
John, did you? Oh, John, you're thinking about these. So Becky, do you have a question?
I do not, it was, actually, I do. What is longevity?
Longevity is extra money for the time of service.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Becky?
Not on the budget.
But.
No, just, yeah.
Covered everything.
Yeah, everything. So, yeah, I went through, I appreciate all the detail. What I wanted to highlight in our conversation with the chief is I really appreciate the external partnerships. I really see those growing with the law enforcement council and MEMA. Can't do enough of that, it's really awesome. I just, I think that's outstanding. And I guess my question was, is it just you that's interacting with those other folks or?
Mainly myself and Luchan.
And I know you were doing, working on the succession planning.
Yeah.
That's still going well? Excellent. It was really well done. Highlights, job was well done.
Did want to bring up the data conversion of the Pro Four microsystems to the IMC. We did, Regional did tell us that they were going to have state money. However, they're waiting for funding on that. I did budget it for next year, just in case. I did talk to Chris Ryan today. And I have to catch up with Greg, but we may have to.
Just a question, you devoted several paragraphs to this ICS 402 program?
Yep.
Which is not only for you, it's for us.
For you, yeah. Matter of fact, we're trying to schedule a class coming up there probably in the middle of March.
Okay. I mean, that's critical. Have there been any, you know, events or incidents in the, in the, well, that's 10 or 20 years that you say, hey, something like this would have been helpful?
Not that I can remember, but I could be, we have that hurricane or plane crash or anything like that.
When the water plant was almost collapsed, that came very close to needing. That's probably the closest one we've had. That was, that was real touch and go for a little while.
It was 2015?
Yeah, 2015 with the big snows, yeah.
It sounds like a worthwhile pre-hour investment.
Yeah.
Is it a tabletop?
No, it's a PowerPoint, right in there.
The tabletop would probably follow.
Yeah.
Okay.
After you had that basic training, then we would do a tabletop.
Okay.
And just the org structure, like, what's helpful about those is usually the, everybody understanding what the command structure is, right?
Right, exactly. We've talked about it for a long time.
And do we have some things that we have to define that we haven't defined yet?
Lieutenant McFoy just had his hand up. Put it down, but it was off.
Had a little bathroom.
Yeah, there was that, and you also had the Nemlich.
The Nemlich, yeah. So I just gave it to Demi today for your next meeting to get the approval so we can join the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council.
Be careful when you're scheduling around the middle of the month.
Yeah.
Awfully busy.
December.
I mean, if.
Any, any middle of the month.
We're not in.
Well, specifically, there's a town meeting.
Oh, yeah, right.
What, you mean November?
This month, yes, you mean November, okay, yes.
Right, your next, what's your next meeting on the?
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about a course or a power.
We jumped to different topic, I'm sorry. I jumped to the Nemlich approval.
Oh, Nemlich, yes.
Right.
But if you're.
That training class, right. You think it might be possible?
It's possible, he didn't get back to us today, but I'm thinking more like January.
Yeah, I think January is probably more realistic.
This is fine.
Yeah. There are a number of places that each of us could be at any one time.
Yeah, we talked about. Yeah, we talked about December was too close to Halloween.
Okay, fine, fine. You said the middle of the month, and I. Yes. Just as an aside, and having nothing to do with either of these topics, I hear very good things about interactions between citizens and your force. They are polite, people will talk to me specifically to say, I did something really dumb. And the officer who stopped me, introduced himself, explained what I had done, and was polite and understanding. And that's the kind of thing that I really like to hear.
We have a very good young group right now.
Yeah.
And I'm very proud of them, the work that they do.
Well, and I personally had a situation where I was out of town and all kinds of alarms and bells were going off. And, yeah, and it was Officer David.
Yeah, David.
Responded to my house, and I wasn't even in the state, but it was just fire department, police, and just, it was really nice. The way it was handled by the departments and very reassuring, and anyway, so.
I just want to thank Jake for all his support, it's been a pleasure working.
When's the ballgame?
Yeah, I was at a hockey game. Now, that's a good, really good point. Visibly, the way you guys all work together, it's just very evident that everybody is collaborating really well.
Last time I was at the fire station, and there was a nice mix and exchanges.
I think that, oh, police and fire, small towns should be looking at this as a standard, as to how the public safety works together.
Got to include Bayon and Chuck in that as well.
Absolutely.
And Nudge. He's not on.
Run away.
No, it's been great.
I just have a question though, what is your plan for this upcoming year? I mean, is there any, is there any help you need from us? Because we're going into budget season, all that stuff.
Coming year is one of the big things for next year is we have to do some hostile intruder training. Matter of fact, Jake and I are going to meet on Wednesday after the chamber and talk about one of the things I want to talk about. So that was one of the things that we, out of my shift meetings and my staff meetings, one of the things that is a really hot topic item. And we don't train enough, in my opinion, so we have to look for someone to come in and help us with that. That's one of my huge goals.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for the very comprehensive report.
Yep.
Jake.
Follow that one.
Not really. No. Thanks to this guy, pointed out I called you by the wrong name, shot you as a fairy, oh my gosh, thank you.
No, you're not.
Yeah, I know.
So everyone got the report or something? So I obviously did October a little bit differently, just I've been doing little snapshots, wanting to kind of overview what we've been doing. So far, it's been going pretty well, our training regiment has increased, morale has increased overall. I couldn't be happier with where the department was, where it is now, so I think if we keep the same trajectory, we'll be on a good kind of pathway. Concerns, you know, obviously our overtime budget's a little bit of a concern, it started off really low. What was kind of given to us with the budget of my processor, we have seen a significant decrease in what our overtime has been in historic levels. It's down, you know, forty-something percent, and that trend's going to continue. We just had a graduation firefighter Stevenson on Friday, firefighter going starts December tenth, I believe it is. And then, once he gets back in February, we'll be fully staffed, so vacations aren't triggering overtime, things like that, a lot of that is kind of covered. In the report, I had mentioned that our staffing levels, we'll see a slight adjustment to paternity leave, as well as a medical issue that's been scheduled. But those, I think, most of that we should be able to absorb with our staffing and the staff configurations of people that are out, kind of diverse. So it's not going to affect one group versus another. Other than that, other kind of goals is trying to get our fleet back up to where it is. I will say one thing that is very nice, being in a smaller town, the staff takes very good care of the equipment. Going around, looking at equipment at the age it is and seeing how well it's been taken care of is kudos to them. Because I can tell you from other places I have been and worked, sometimes that is not the case. So it's really, you know, they really work to extend the life of all these, you know, large capital investments, so that's nice to see. The ladder truck should be here, we should see, they sent this out to Minnesota in January, so that'll be delightful, to do the final eval of it. And then it has to hit the, kind of the road, the tour, if you will, and then we'll have it most likely middle of July, August first, the latest, after it's kind of fitted for us. And they take all their kind of demo stuff and take that off. So we're on a good kind of pathway for those as well, barring any significant mechanical issues. We have the company coming in to do the PMs on the trucks, they do it annually, they'll be in the next week or so. And then we also have the Linfield truck on loan, which we should have for a while, so that gives me a little comfort that if we did hit a mechanical issue, we have a backup plan, if you will. That's good to know.
Kathy?
First, I wonder why? No, no, I really appreciate the comprehensive informational reports they've been sending out, it's really helpful. And the capital plan that you outlined, expenditures for the equipment stuff, again, very, very helpful. I really also appreciate your due diligence on trying to get a call force restarted. It just withered on the vine and was left to die or was killed, I don't know which it is, but it's worth a try. And you're demonstrating visible results, and that's very much appreciated.
Yeah, we have interviews starting Thursday, potentially, we're just solidifying some times. And so over the next two weeks, we're going to be interviewing seven candidates, and I'm waiting to hear back from some of the ones that were kind of far out, to see if maybe they work closer by, and that wasn't illustrated in their application, so we're trying to vet those as well.
That's excellent. No, it's just evidence that in the short time you've been here, you listen really well. The fact that the morale has improved so much, that's also evidence that you listen very well, because you listen to your people, you listen to us, we try to make it all fit together.
The referee?
You're doing great, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, great, appreciated the report, and in particular, as Kathy said, yeah, I'm glad to see there's being some progress made with the call firefighters. I'm not sure where that's going to go, but we've got to have some answers, so you can kind of figure out what's going on. Couple of things with the budget, if you could, in the next quarter, put in, put in the budget number.
Okay.
You've got percentages there.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if it's like, you know, twenty percent of a three hundred dollar budget or twenty percent of a thirty thousand dollar. That's, that's the only, so if you put in that column, that's fine, and that gives us some perspective of what's going on. The other thing on the emergency response is, I'm always curious how much mutual aid is involved. You've got all of these calls down here.
Yep.
But I don't know how much is mutual aid, how many, I don't know how many calls come in a month that are mutual aid. And that's mutual aid where we're supporting somebody else?
Yep.
Where their support, or actually, two, two teams have to go out, I guess. It could be mutual aid, or maybe it's two teams from us that are going, how often do two, two calls come in at the same time?
Also simultaneous calls.
Simultaneous calls and mutual aid, both of those, I think, are kind of helpful to know how stretched we're kind of getting, or how frequency that becomes, things become a stretch.
Yeah, and we have a new software, one online November first, so you'll have all the data you could hope for, at the first month of November. So that's actually an easy ask.
Okay, great.
So it's not, that's absolutely can be done.
Good, thank you. Otherwise, great, I think everything's going along well. I did drop by the firehouse, I think it was Friday, they said, yeah, you were off at a graduation.
Yep.
So you're getting someone back?
Yes, first yesterday.
You're all smiles, although you're going to lose somebody, I guess, in January, then for going to.
Yeah, December tenth until.
Oh, December.
Yeah. So he has a week of Christmas off, so he gets back on shift, so that actually helps us staffing wise over the holidays with this vacation stuff.
Good.
Thank you very much, it's, the reports we get are so easy to follow, and I feel as if I just, I know what's going on. I also like your, the calendar you did with the apparatus, the various pieces of equipment. And I wanted to ask you, when you, when you say restore fire safety education in the schools and for the elderly?
Yep.
How, how would you do that, and how soon do you think you would be able to do that?
So we had, previous years, prior to COVID, we had a safe, not safer, but safe grant to provide education in schools and to the elderly. With COVID, that is, kind of went by the wayside, I don't think the grant was applied for the last year, we'll apply for it this year, and that's basically a guaranteed grant. Once we have that, then we can set up, working with the school systems, which with their curriculum is very hard for them to carve out some time for us. My hope is at least to get into the, you know, younger years, the kindergarten is through, you know, fourth, fifth grade, as well as doing things at like Newport Park, working with council agents, some of those things to reduce, you know, risk for the elderly.
Wonderful.
So I'm hoping that would be a July timeframe by the time budgets should come out, student grants should come out in January. We'd get awarded in May, maybe for the next school year, and then we can start the elderly a little sooner than that.
Thank you.
Any other comments here or there?
I just want to say that this has been a lot more pleasurable in the past, these quarterly reviews. Thank you.
Anything else you guys, I could do better, or?
Last question, same, last question for you that I asked the chief. Your key goals, you kind of outlined those here in your report, what you're focusing on, is there anything in particular?
So I think I'm very big on training, so trying to increase training, and I echo what Chief Gerald said. The partnership between us, between Bayon and being on the boat, the police and Bayon, we've been working very closely with the schools on active shooter events and planning both with us and with Essex, because a event like that would be a multi-tier approach. So we are already in planning stages, and we're hoping to do some type of drill in one of the vacations in the February, April, doing multi-agency drill to kind of practice that.
So, I'm sorry, did you want to talk anymore about the utility vehicle as part of the town meeting? You hold your recommendation.
Well, I thought we were supposed to hear from the finance committee.
So they're going to be meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, it's on Wednesday.
So if you want to wait for that, which is fine, you just have to make your decision right before the town meeting.
And I would like to know what kind, what information I would need, since I am the person who would.
Do you have the shorts thrown?
That's what you get for not being here.
No, I, no, I was here. I had my hand up for that one. On the other night, too.
So the finance committee will make a final decision on Wednesday night.
Okay. I mean, just think, with the overtime being a little higher than we thought, you know, is this something we have to do right now? I just, they're there to advise us on financial matters, and I don't like to get up in front of them.
So I can add kind of two tidbits, if you don't mind. One is, we did get, we were able to secure fifty thousand dollars for our old ladder truck as a trade-off, which we thought we were going to get.
Oh, big number.
Well, it's better than zero.
Absolutely.
That is, that is.
Compared to one point four that we had a five and a one for.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And the second part is the kind of the benefit to the town, I don't think it's been articulated as, maybe as clear as it could be, is what bothers me is eighty percent or a little less than that, and our calls are medical release. And when mutually calls us, when a town runs those calls, or specifically one of assets where we do the majority, or, I'd say the majority of our mutual aid assistance that we give, we're sending our only transport ambulance to those towns, we don't have one in town. So doesn't mean it won't go out of town, so somebody could call for our ambulance, you know, the kind of abdominal is falling in place. But I kind of get worried when we don't have a transport in asset, and this will at least give us, it won't fix the problem entirely, but it's, will give us a Band-Aid until we can get it fixed. So I really think the safety of the citizens will be improved by the added.
I would also voice the fact that it gives more, that vehicle probably add a little bit more, give more visibility as far as, again, if we're looking for community policing and community public safety, so it's easier to tool that thing around, you know?
Well, that's the other part of it, too, right now, we're at a three-man shift, and our ambulance is tied up. One person's taking the fire truck out, which we're trying to extend the life of the pumps as long as we can. And by that going out on the medicals with one person, wear and tear, not to mention the likelihood of, or probability of, you know, backing into something if you're by yourself, something like that. So that's, that's the other added part of it. I don't lose as much sleep over that as I do the safety component.
How much is the?
Sixteen.
So you got it covered with.
From unused funds, though, right? So you already, I mean.
But you're saying we got another fifty that we didn't plan on getting.
So the ladder truck should come under the one point four, you know, all said and everything's.
Do we need to wait for finance? Do you want to wait for finance?
I think it probably makes sense to have a short pre-town meeting, meeting.
Sarah Melish has her hand up.
Yes, Sarah. Sarah, if you're.
Through the tree.
Sorry, unmuted. So the finance committee was holding their decision based on the fire chief's long-term plan for vehicle equipment, which we have received. And so we will be reviewing that on Wednesday night and making determination.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't uncomplicate our schedule.
No.
So here's, here's the, the risk is that if we approve it, and the finance committee, after their review.
Doesn't.
Don't, then we have a disagree, is it, is it necessary?
I'm comfortable, I'm not looking at the finances at this point, that's what they do. I'm looking at the overall health and welfare of the town, safety-wise, and from that perspective, I'm willing to make a decision now.
And you're willing to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve or accept whatever I'm supposed to do.
My question, right now, how does it stand, Greg? What is, what is our statement in the warrant?
Yeah, Article six.
You'll make your recommendation at the town meeting floor.
Okay, and we have other articles that are also in that situation, correct? Article thirteen?
Yes.
So we can do it all the same.
That's the point I'm making, in other words, we've got to make a couple of decisions down the road anyway.
I can live with that. We're going to be, we have to show up early anyway.
Or we can make one now, and have one fewer to have to make later.
I don't want to complicate things. I would, I'm going to go back to it, I make a motion.
You did, and I seconded it.
Article six.
Article six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the purchase of a new sport utility vehicle for the fire department for a cost of sixty-four thousand, and to fund this purchase from unused funds in the appropriation for the fire department's new ladder truck as approved at the June twenty twenty-three special town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thanks to town.
Is there a second?
I seconded, he noted.
You made a motion, she seconded, you both are recommending that we approve. Ready for the vote?
Sure. Yes.
Anne says yes.
I'm staying.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
So we will stand up for your SUV.
And I'm gonna go on Wednesday to chat with them.
I think you need to. I mean, Becky feels very confident, and this is her article.
I do feel very confident.
So the story you tell will, it can be...
Compelling.
It's in different directions.
You can do it.
I don't have much to tell.
Sorry, I was ready.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I think that the finance committee wants to review the long-term schedule for the equipment replacements. And we would prefer not to have a contest, a contest on the town meeting floor. We would, we would prefer to be able to vote on Wednesday, have you support us or not. But to vote in advance of us is problematic.
I think we just did.
Yeah.
It's done.
I know. I'm just saying, it's...
Yep.
Your choice.
I don't see, well...
We're done, I mean, onto the next one.
I don't think it's a problem. We don't always lockstep, and that's...
No, but they have a, they have a role to play, and I just feel like we got in front of a little bit, so...
Well, we can still play that financial role.
No, but I mean, gotta give them a shot. I mean, meeting schedules are tough, and I get that.
Okay. I think we've wandered off your quarterly review pretty far.
We did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's quarter to nine, and we've been sitting down for a long time. I would like to stand up and pass off a glass of water.
Five minutes, two minutes?
Five minutes.
All right.
Yes, she did something.
So they didn't do it?
No, they haven't.
They do that, okay.
Yay, good girl!
That was too loud.
Yes, thank you.
She rolled, yay! I'm so, I go, I don't, I can't play this during the meeting. Oh, my God! Double.
That may be.
What is going on over there?
Don't mind us.
How much more do we have on the agenda?
Ah, I tell what, I'll let him up here. Quarterly reviews. Community center update, special town meeting, liaison updates, consent agenda, ETA to court. 25 is supposed to... Twenty minutes behind.
Let's not be there.
We're good.
Let's not be there, yeah, we're good.
Had it done.
That's right. It's bedtime, it's past my bedtime now. Dan, do you need a cup?
Um, it's fine.
Because I've, I've just been using the straw, but I have this.
That's fine.
I have not had anything out of here if you'd like to drink out of it. I'll put it in my dishwasher at home.
The next item is the community center update.
Sure, so I just thought it might be helpful just to quickly recap how we got to where we are to this day. So obviously, the Manchester Community Center, being a private nonprofit, they had their own lease agreement with Harbors Point. And that lease agreement, in recent years, turned to a month-to-month lease. And in that lease, it specified that if the lease was going to be terminated, then the nonprofit had to decide whether or not they were going to move the building at their expense or leave it. And if they were to leave it, then it would be under the ownership of the Harbors Point, of the association. So the lease has been terminated, and the MCC, I believe, is not in a position to move the building. So the default will be that they don't have a lease and they don't have a building. That's nothing to do with the town. That was their pre-arrived agreements between the parties. So the town was invited to enter into discussion to see if we wanted to use the building, assuming that it was going to fall into the hands of the, to Harbors Point. And so we've been talking to Harbors Point, and they have, they have indeed offered a multi-year lease, where we would assume the lease for the building and the land underneath it, and that we could in turn use it as we see fit. Their stated purpose to us was they wanted to see the building used more intensively. So we have discussed having it serve as a, as a, as a public restroom for the downtown area, possibility of having the Harbor Master have an office in the building as well, being closer to the Reed Park floats and where the Harbor Master boats are kept, quicker access to the harbor in case of emergency, in addition to more meetings that could take place there, et cetera. So that would be new uses beyond what it has today, in addition to continuing most of the uses that the community center currently is operating under there. So it would, we could partner with the community center to keep their functions going, as well as expand to some of these new town uses. So that's the premise under which we have been trying to create a win-win situation for both the community center and for the town, and for Harbors Point, as far as that's concerned, in terms of their desire to see more activity and more use of the building. So tonight, what I have before you is a proposed memorandum of understanding, both with MCC, the Manchester Community Center, committing in writing your desire to partner with them if we are able to secure the lease. And I think it outlines some of the question marks, I guess, that the MCC had in their minds. And in addition, there is a memorandum of understanding that we hope to be able to have signed by before next Monday's town meeting with Harbors Point indicating, again, not just a verbal but a written commitment to move forward with a long-term lease. So I'm hopeful that, A, you find those memorandums of understanding consistent with what you've been thinking, and that accurately outline your position and what you're comfortable with, and that it would be helpful to have those signed in order to let the voters know that we have these agreements, and that we would base the next steps on those agreements. So that's where we are. Like I say, I remain optimistic with Harbors Point and their commitment to moving forward with a long-term lease. And I think with that in hand, we can accommodate the needs of the community center without too much loss of activity.
We would sublease to the Manchester Community Center entity, the nonprofit. How would that look in terms of, and I know it said, come up with a schedule that's works for both? How, how would we charge the Manchester Community Center organization? Will it be prorated based on their use and our use?
Right, so we would come up with an agreement about sort of percentage of time of use, and then share the cost of that based on that percentage of use.
And how many, how many actual, it's been a long time since I've been there. How many actual rooms are upstairs? In the upstairs area?
So there's one main functioning room upstairs.
Yeah.
There's a loft area in the back end. And then there's the downstairs office, small office, kitchen area, and the restrooms.
And restrooms. I had another question. And Harbors Point is amenable to our subletting?
Yes.
Okay. I think that that's a really nice option that has been arrived at to keep the Manchester Community Center organization able to use a facility in town. I, I'm, one of my biggest concerns is that I think there are a lot of people who do not understand that they are not a town entity. And I, at the planning board meeting last Monday night, they even made comment that this came out of left field when they've been, various members from the organization have been talking to other town offices to try to determine if there's land available. So I just, it's, I'm, I'm concerned that they are not understanding how much the town is really trying to help here. And I'm not sure how we can get that information out, that this is the win deal for the community, for Manchester Community Center. Without this, they disappear at the end of this month. They're gone.
This is the only short-term option.
This is the only short-term option, because once that building belongs to, or turns over to Harbors Point, there's nothing that says they have to even keep the building there. I mean, it's...
Well, technically, the lease is ended.
Right.
Yeah.
It's already, so they're...
But they have time to move the building till the end of this month.
To indicate whether or not they are going to move it.
Yeah.
So from November 12th to November 22nd, they can then, they can advise Harbors Point that they are going to move it. Then they have a little 90 days to actually move the building. So they have basically two weeks from whatever to make that determination, whether or not, the question and one of the problems becomes, is whether or not they actually vacate. Okay? And that's, I mean, that's just typical of any kind of tenant, so...
So are things proceeding like normal right now? They're on a normal November schedule?
Running their programs?
Yeah, they're running their programs.
They, there's, there are programs that have sought and found other locations.
Oh, some have...
Some have done that already.
Okay.
The Legion has been approached, but they, they can't commit to like every Sunday for AA meetings or something like that, because they have paying events as well.
So I thought that MOU looked good. I did have one question, though. So this got me thinking. All of your direct reports, with the exception of the fire chief, are currently in this building? Or is there somebody else who's not? Am I missing somebody?
Library.
I'm sorry, library, okay. Library. Pretty close by.
Huncom's next door.
All right, seaside, so this campus here.
This campus.
Okay. Having another direct report, like by, so with the facilities master plan we discussed earlier, with this here, your leadership team is sprawling a bit. That changes how the team works together. And today, where somebody might walk down the hall and talk to Chuck, and that all goes away. It'll go away slowly, but it will go away and it'll change how your team works. When that happens, typically, you need to rely more on technology to communicate. So I just ask you to think about that. I don't know how well this particular building is outfitted with the type of network access that Bayon might need to connect into the town system, you know? So there's a lot of implications when you start having your direct reports in other locations that I don't, I haven't heard we've talked through. And happy to meet with you offline on that, but big implications that we don't, that we don't have budget to support. Okay, so just putting that butt up.
So, okay, yeah. So these documents, we're looking at them today, and based upon the conversation today, you will then share them with the appropriate folks and say, this is kind of a memorandum of understanding draft. What do you guys think?
So I've already shared the drafts?
You've shared it with them, so, and have you got, you've got some comment back, or?
Not, not to date, no.
Okay, all right.
So...
All right, so the lease that is going to be signed, that we would sign with Harbors Point, we don't know what the value of that lease is. That's obviously a negotiating issue.
We don't have that price nailed down.
And we have no idea, I mean, we know, I guess, we know what the lease arrangement was with the community center?
Right, yes, we do.
Which was a very low number, I don't, or if it was any number.
Yes, we've been told that it would, it would be similar to that.
Well more market value.
Okay, all right. They realize that they have become a taxable entity?
Who?
Harbors Point, when they take possession of this building.
That's true. The building...
Becomes taxable.
Becomes taxable, yes.
You think they are, they are, they are putting that into their thinking?
Yeah, I haven't had, we haven't had that...
Has the assessor taken a look at it?
No, they have, that has been broached, that has been discussed briefly. And the, the desire at some point, in the future at some point, would be to come up with another nonprofit.
Well, the, the building would largely be occupied or used by a nonprofit. I don't, that's between the assessor, that might be another discussion.
But a new, so, and that's just a matter of, that's where you come in. But the discussion has come up as to that Harbors Point would much prefer, but it's not, regardless of, to have it, we would prefer to have it as a nonprofit.
Oh, well, it would simplify it, it's just take one more variable out of the picture, which you would like to see.
Yes.
But at this point...
The long-term agency have a better chance.
Well, I think, yeah, you might need to know kind of how that's fitting together. It's until December 15th, no question that's going to be a question.
I think that's an excellent point, and...
I think that's an excellent point, and to whatever information you can get before the town meeting.
This information will get out there and be what we ask.
Really, really.
They're asking us now.
Excellent point, John.
Anne Rosemary Costello has her hand up.
Yes. Hi, Rosemary Costello, 12th Bennett Street. Just curious if there was the lease-to-own option discussed.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that. I, my sense is that that's not something they want to entertain, but doesn't say we can't ask the question.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Imagine that then becomes more expensive.
Do you want to own it, though?
I mean, I'm not sure that the town is interested, uninterested in owning that.
Right.
So you benefit more to get the tax money.
Does that work? Be a bit of a different ballgame, wouldn't it?
I don't think there's any appetite for that.
Okay. Another question, 10 years, is that our number, Harper's Point number, whose number?
So 10 years is typically the maximum that a municipality can do unless you have
Oh.
special authorization to do so. So it will be 10 years, but it can be renewed.
Okay, fine, I just don't know where the 10.
Is there other questions about? Oh, Mr. Gates, yes, please.
Two Gates, two Desmond Avenue. Is there any move afoot to discuss this article about the lease, together with the article about the taking by eminent domain?
In the law, as it stands, the lease comes up first. And I suspect that if the lease, the article asking for permission to lease the property passes, we will move to pass over the eminent domain.
They've agreed to pass it over?
We have not agreed to anything yet.
Is there any move afoot, to repeat, to combine the discussion with the two versions? Lease or eminent domain?
They're very separate, very separate. And the eminent domain, I think that is not a quick solution, nor an inexpensive one. And I I think right now Harper's Point is trying to work very cooperatively with the town in our effort to try to help the Manchester Community Center organization.
I think from a purely practical standpoint, I don't know how long the whole process of eminent domain takes, but I can, I can envision where the community center would become obsolete.
Closed down for a long time.
Because if you're talking six months, a year, two years, all these, the events, the, they'll be, they'll find new homes. All right. I know that they've already approached some, and there is discussions of where else they would go. They don't, these groups, the Mothers Club, they can go to the library, okay? There's churches for the AA and, oh, Rita's Anonymous, okay? There are other avenues that these groups, it'd be an inconvenience for them, but they're not going to just wait for the community center to work its way through.
Additionally, you have to actually, you have to prove that there are no other via options, and that is simply not the case. There are other options.
These groups will find other options.
Well, the groups will, but as will the whole idea of using eminent domain, that is not the only resort we have. And because there are other options, that would essentially make it a non-starter. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, I'm skeptical that we would be successful in a taking proceeding.
Did you succeed in speaking with their lawyer? The Manchester Community Center lawyer? No?
We have not.
Okay.
Keep trying.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
I wonder. Better than a case, I'm sorry. Desmond School. I wonder. I know that some time ago, it was discussed about maybe the town moving some of their offices from here, like the harbor master, who was unfortunately in a cave, in my opinion. He's the only one who is working for the water. He cannot even see with a window in the water. And also the Parks and Recreation Department, and also bathrooms, they were talking about providing there an information center. A lot of other towns have those. So why won't the town even buy that land so we can have an end with it?
It's not for sale.
Oh, they're not selling the property, Andres?
No.
The condominium? But you know, recently, because we live in town and we're not in any board member position ourselves, but just citizens in this town, and residents, a lot of people share information with us and opinions. And they said, some are boycotting going to the pharmacy, or even people who want to go to the therapy of their, going to there, they're not going because of that.
That's, that to me is the problem with social media.
Yep.
There's a lot of misin, there's a lot of misinformation out there.
No, I mean, they didn't, they told me themselves they were not going.
And because that's based on misinformation. Their decisions, and their decisions, and they're welcome to it. But I believe that misinformation has led them down that path.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Gates. A slightly different, but definitely related subject is the creation of a pedestrian crossing from the Harbor Point property to Reed Park. And then creating new parking spaces between Tappan Street and the beach. I believe, if I be speaking out of turn, but a conversation with George Smith some years ago indicated that he had an arrangement with the town that the town in the summer could use his lower lawn area as an overflow parking for singing beach, on the proviso that there be no parking on Beach Street whatsoever from Tappan Street to the beach. And I'm
We never found anything.
That was, if it still holds. But if that still holds, those two parking spaces he was talking about in that relation would not be feasible.
That, that didn't, Greg, we never found anything that supported that. We're getting off pizza.
That is on.
It's an article.
It's an article. We will come to it. Right now, I think Kathy's right, we're talking about the community center and agreeing that memorandum of understanding in substantially the same form that's been presented would be acceptable to us. As a, two, one between the town and Harper's Point, and one between the town and Manchester Community Center.
Do you need a formal motion to approve them right now, or after?
That would be helpful.
I move to approve both MOUs.
Drafts.
Yes, both MOUs asked for that.
Do we have?
You were supposed to do that.
I know.
I thought we only have one in front of us right now.
There was one with the Harper's Point, and then the other one with the community center.
They're very similar.
Very similar.
Okay.
True.
Second.
Move in a second.
Second.
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Anne says, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay. So that gives us the, gives us more information to support the warrant article for a lease.
Assuming they get signed.
No, the, oh, the MOUs.
Yeah.
Right, yes, right. Is there anything further to discuss about the community center at this point? Okay. That being said, now we do the review of articles. Article one is moving the town meeting.
That's me.
And I think tomorrow night, would you be willing to answer questions about that?
Sure.
Great. Is there anything that you have any doubt about?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I know the purpose of the move might impact, I kind of drafted a comment on that just to make sure that the bases are touched, but there are not lots of bases for that one.
Okay.
So I think we're, we're okay with that.
Okay, article two is the enhanced security of computer network, which Kathy is moving. Will you be here? No, you will be remote if you can get here.
I will be probably remote for the first part of the meeting, and then I will get here eventually.
Okay. I think we can, we can safely divert, yeah, delay discussion of that article until you get here.
Okay, I will.
And the next one is $80,000 for an operational review of the school district, which again is John's.
That's me, and so I guess I need a little bit of guidance. What is the number we're going to put in there? We're going to put in 80,000?
80,000 is the upper limit.
Should we use language to that effect?
So you can't.
Because I know you've said that.
You can in a motion.
Your number's got to be your number, so.
Number has to be a motion. You can't say up to in a, in a motion.
But we can, we don't have to spend the 80,000.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, should we quote some sort of a number with regard to what the consulting cost is going to be in total?
So the, the, the original estimates were from 75, yeah, 25,000 to 120,000.
Is that a number we can use?
Yes.
75 to 100?
2020.
Under, 120.
If it's 120, then.
That's the eight.
Or at the 80.
Okay, all right. That's it.
But there are a couple of other quotes that came in under 100, so.
Okay, all right, so that's in the ballpark. But, but if you use the 75 to 100, people can do the math and understand why the 80 is there.
Right. Do you think you need to know something about the statement of work, what this review is, what it's supposed to produce?
We do have a draft of that, that would be helpful.
Yes, okay. Do we have a draft of that now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, the school committee got that, was it Benedict was his name?
Ben.
Ben something or other.
The.
The finance chair.
Chair of the finance committee.
Yes.
And he, he sent out a draft, which I asked him to send it to me, and he did, and he sent it to Greg as well.
Okay, I need that.
Yeah.
He said it was not, it needed some fleshing out, and you might, his email will be on that. So you might want to contact him to make sure that you have the answers.
Okay, all right, so I can do that first thing tomorrow.
I'll forward that to you.
I'll probably do that, but I'll probably get in touch with him. All right.
Reverting to Kathy for a moment. If someone asks you, well, what exactly are these security measures that we're paying for?
Yeah, I know, I probably could use a little more detail on that. I know it's, the pen testing is included, and some enhancements based on the recent breach in that, is that the town of Milton?
Milton, yes.
It was in the, it was in the cricket. So, but if you want to send a few specifics, that would be great.
Eventually. Okay. Article four is a planning board article. And I had asked Ron if he had someone who would speak to it, and I haven't heard back.
I would expect him or Sarah to speak to me.
Yes.
Okay. Should somebody, I'll, I'll.
Alan will make sure that that's.
No, no, this is, this is for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, in other words, would they be on Zoom or something, or here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm meeting with Ron virtually tomorrow morning, so I can.
Yeah, it just, it would be.
Confirm with him.
It would be much better to have them explain what they intend to do rather than us making up stuff. Me making up stuff, to be specific. Okay. On the 960, article five, which is $916, the important information there is that it is for previous years, and therefore has to be a 90% vote of meeting, and that we're not saying exactly who is paid to because it was for parking tickets that were improperly adjudicated. So I will take that one. Okay, and article six is the SUP for the fire department? Becky?
I've, I've got some information on that, and I believe Jake is still on the meeting. And if they need more information than I have, I'm wondering if Jake would be there tomorrow night?
Yeah, as long as he doesn't have a conflict, sure.
Okay, I don't see him.
If he, if he could do that, certainly he.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if it would be important for him to have a specific timeframe where he needs to be present, we can move these things around for his convenience.
Do you want me to reach out to him tomorrow, Greg, or is that something you do? What would you prefer?
Makes no difference.
Um, I'll, I'll.
If you want to, touch base with him anyways.
I'll touch base, I'll do that.
Just a suggestion, you don't call him Jason.
I know. I did that once. I don't think I will ever do that again. Poor man, he was so good about it, anyway.
Probably people by the wrong names is.
It happens.
It certainly does.
Anne and John, no.
And Brian and John.
I've gotten married, or whatever, okay.
Okay. Number seven is, is moving funds around to pay consultants rather than salaries.
Right, and is this because of the sharing arrangement on the conservation commission agent? Or the fact that Betsy left and we're substituting? No contractual work, okay, got it, yep.
The new interim services are relying on contracted.
Okay, yes, I can speak to that.
The article eight is for a lease agreement.
Got that info, Brian?
I'm just going to basically summarize what Greg's report, the, in your, in your package.
She spells it out.
Yeah, there's a mix, yeah.
Yeah, between what I wrote tonight and.
I think, what, you know, I think then. I think what we know, I think then, yeah, I think we could have a sense.
The questions are likely to be, um no, the the community center had an asset which was valued at four hundred thousand dollars or more, and they've lost it. What's the town doing about that?
The town can't, I mean, the town is working with the uh, there's nothing they can do about the asset. The town, we cannot save the asset for the community center. Is that fair? I mean, it's that's a that's a civil issue.
Correct.
It's it's also the fact that it's not a town entity, that's the big thing.
What we have, we were asked to intercede on behalf of the community center uh in a landlord tenant dispute, something that's normally outside our purview. We've been asked, and this is what we've come up, we negotiated a deal with the Harpers Point to allow the community center to continue operations in the same building. It won't be theirs, but in the same manner that they have in the last, as they say, forty-seven years. Is that fair? Does that sound good?
And Greg, you'll be on tomorrow night, right?
All the hard questions go to Greg, but.
Yeah, always, punt.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
I won't say that.
Don't say it. The next is resident parking um and I have to confess, I haven't read the full text yet. Okay, that's something that you're moving. I, it seems as if you've got quite a lot.
So and yeah, and so in general, though, we're removing some of the detail in our general bylaw to make it more flexible so the board can make decisions on a.
The question they're going to get is, why are you removing parking restrictions from my street?
And the answer is?
The answer is, you're not removing them, you're just putting them under the purview of and 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 the probably the parking clerk and the police chief making the situation so that we can make adjustments without having to have the town meeting approve it.
Right.
Exactly.
So because it's in the bylaw, town meeting has to approve any changes to the list of streets. This is a more efficient way of managing that list.
Quicker to request to add reso parking only rather than always having to wait for a town meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Article ten is the two parking spaces.
Yeah, that's what I, like I said, I'm not gonna die on this hill, and I know we're gonna get pushed back on those two spaces anyway, but it's an issue to accommodate a public safety issue as as Reed's Park and the transient talks become more and more used. It's a safety issue as people traverse. Wow, that's gotta be worth it, huh? All right, and uh so it just it just makes sense, and because parking has always been tight around town, what uh like just would be a net sum, you know, net sum gain, but is that the whole premise behind this whole thing? You problem with that?
No.
My mom's looking at her.
No, I'm reading, I'm reading.
Right. Article eleven is the first of the um community um conditions. And I guess.
Again, there may be an opportunity for the for either you or the petitioners to move to pass over if article eight is successful and people are convinced that that's the better way to go.
I expect there will be people in the audience tomorrow night who will want to talk about this.
Yes.
And I think I will let them, I'm gonna try very hard to keep this on, what does this article mean, rather than.
Merit, so.
The then then I think it's a terrible idea. And and um but I think we have to let the petitioners speak about why they think it's a good idea.
So who who was this, the the community center themselves or the petitioners?
Was it Morgan Abbott? I think Morgan Abbott did this one, didn't he?
Well, it was it was handed in by MCC board member.
And then Alan gets to decide who's gonna put uh make the motion?
So he'll reach out to MCC, he's he's also been in touch with Morgan, who is who's also been working on this apparently, so.
What what did the what did uh what's our position? How's how's this been published in the warrant? Is this a we'll make recommendation on the floor?
No.
We do not recommend?
You do not recommend.
The finance committee didn't recommend that.
Correct.
That's what I thought.
And the the planning board, although they they voted.
They also voted.
Not to support it. It was a.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah. So. Um just as they did vote to support the lease, and that was four in favor of the lease, two not in favor.
I'm just waiting.
Okay, um article twelve, which we are also in favor of, is um requiring that all zoning changes go to a ballot. And I think our town council had something to say about that.
Correct, town council does not believe that the AG's office will approve this if it is approved by the voters. There's case law that says that zoning zoning approval process is set by state statute and local ordinances cannot alter it.
So will will town council speak at the meeting then?
Yes.
Would that then be have a motion to pass over or?
Depends on the pleasure of the of the meeting.
No, okay.
Yeah, just.
Like, but we can't pass over if we're if we've already started discussion.
Yeah, that's true. Alan Alan typically doesn't allow a motion to pass over once a motion to approve it has already been made. So you'd have to defeat it if it's if the motion is made to to move it.
So, um I assume that the proponents of this will speak and tomorrow, and and I will simply say that our town council believes that this is will not be passed through the general's office. Thank you.
Yeah. I need to make sure you have the town council opinion.
Okay, good.
I just realized that I don't think I gave that to you.
And awkwardly.
So just on that one, I I don't plan to speak on that article tomorrow, but I was a dissenting vote on that, so I would plan to speak on that at town meeting.
You, if you haven't been in touch with Alan, and.
Okay.
You either speak with him now or come to the Saturday.
Yeah, I was planning on coming to the Saturday one, but.
Zoom on the Saturday.
I'll send him, no, that's a good idea, thank you.
That's all Zoom Saturday, right?
Saturday is all that.
I thought.
And awkwardly, my printer didn't pick up the next two articles.
That's because they weren't there.
That's, no, I didn't.
Yeah.
Some other thing.
Yeah.
So article thirteen?
Thirteen and fourteen are the two Powder House.
Those are the Powder House, those are mine, and that also involves council. Or I'm not, it is dependent upon what council has said.
That's because it wasn't included in the packet.
Well, my printer didn't include it because it wasn't there.
That's right, that's right.
So we're trying, I was trying to save the self-image of your printer. Your printer did not fail you.
It did not fail you, no.
This time. Someone else did.
Yes, I was making.
Okay, the two, uh John.
Yeah, so uh where do we stand with?
So town councils are telling me that, you know, well, she can't say with a hundred percent certainty, she can say with ninety-plus percent certainty that Powder House Hill parcels are already subject to article ninety-seven. The nineteen seventy-seven vote was very clear that it conveyed the care, custody, and management of the of the property to the conservation commission for purposes of conservation. So that in the state's eyes makes it subject to article ninety-seven.
All right, so that makes article thirteen moot because it in fact is saying, this is what we wanna do, that is in fact already the condition that is that the land is in.
Right, so the voters may say, well, we just, we wanna, we wanna make sure those eyes are double double dotted, and we will do this to reaffirm that it's article ninety-seven.
Does the FINCOM ta, do they have a take a position on that? I mean, it's just if it's something that's already done, what is the expense that the town would incur to do it again?
I don't really think, minimal.
Okay.
Minimal expense.
Okay.
I mean, you you could file a new deed with the with that reaffirming vote, but so that the expense of filing a deed.
So there's no no downside to, if they wanna do it again?
Correct, there really isn't.
Okay, so if if there isn't, why, because I mean, we're making our recommendation on the floor.
The only downside is you you do completely eliminate that fraction of a chance that someone could challenge it as already being dedicated, but it it does remove that ambiguity, if ever, how slight it is.
So, Valerie, is the question that we might on time support that that?
Yeah.
On the town meeting floor?
If if that's the case, I I would go along with that because that will, I mean, people will understand, this is the way things are going anyway, and they will be suspicious if we say no, and that can create, I I don't see a problem in saying that.
And if there's no if there's no downside, I mean, if it's already done, and this is just re.
Formality.
Right, I I don't.
Yeah, shall we shall we take the 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 support?
Okay, I will make a motion to support article thirteen, favor of conveying the property in the town of Manchester Tis By the Sea to the property of town of Manchester By the Sea with article ninety-seven in force. In effect, that's what this is.
Second.
Lucky, yes. John, yes.
I think she did that intentionally.
She did.
Brian.
You, you.
Yes, Kathy, yes, Anne, yes, Brian, yes. John, yes.
I know, I'm insignificant, but still.
Did you have a a copy of counsel's comment on that, or?
I have her short version. I don't have the elongated version.
Okay, I'll I'll take it. I I don't necessarily need it tomorrow, but I will need, because there's some copy in there that I'd like to have for her next week.
I hope that I have it for tomorrow, I might have it now.
Hello, my name is.
You can just just read, just let her know your initials are BS.
I'm not gonna read, it's right here.
I can't.
Okay.
All right, moving right along.
All right, moving right along.
Cataract surgery, and I still haven't figured out.
It's not like I've ever sat over there, and he's ever sat over here.
Do you want a do you want a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, wait, we have.
We might gonna go article fourteen.
Well, we've got article fourteen, all right.
Article fourteen, which goes a lot steps further and says now they wanna convey the property into a charitable trust, which is kind of putting it in a chest and throwing away the key.
Giving away land, no.
That's a.
No.
An an issue. Um I don't think we're waiting on any any, are we waiting on a a comment from legal on that? No, okay. All right, I think that, I mean, my opinion is is this is overkill.
It's also just because you give it to another organization doesn't mean they.
Can't do something with it.
Can't do something else.
The town loses their voice, control.
Exactly, I I.
I think it's dangerous precedent to start giving away land.
Yeah.
Take it on your hands.
You felt.
Yeah, exactly.
Be happy with what we have.
So.
So it it may be that the petitioners alter it slightly by a motion that says to give a conservation easement to rather than fee simple ownership. That's a that's a variation of a theme here that the the petition article itself is a bit ambiguous about that.
That just bothers me making a decision like that on the floor.
On the floor, right?
Without going all over the.
Or not, I'm just opposed to the amending something like the, you're suggesting they may amend it on the floor, and I I don't like giving anything away on short notice.
Well, it's it's as long as it's town property, yeah, we we have it protected.
In either case, it would require the unanimous of the conservation commission, a two-thirds vote of voters, and two-thirds vote of both houses of the legislature.
So it's an unnecessary.
And then you have to and then you have to justify it, and typically they require additional lands to be conserved. You know, in this particular case, I don't know if they would require that because it's theories to protecting the land.
Will town council explain all this on the floor?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I I I think we're sufficiently covered. Since we don't know what they may do in the future, we don't have to address that tomorrow night.
So all of that's, so we would pass over that or not recommend?
Not recommend.
Not recommend, okay, all right. So that's fine.
Okay, I think we reviewed the articles. Are there significantly, is on a place? Oh, not tonight.
I mean, right now, for article fourteen, excuse me, just one second. So in the warrant, it appears we will make a motion on the floor, correct?
No, it says that you.
Where does it appear? I can't remember.
You recommend not to.
Have I got a note here? All right, so then it stands, oh, I see, I got my note here. So that stands.
Yes.
Okay.
Ryan, oh, nobody's jumping up and saying.
Not tonight, I haven't.
Right, um approval of the minute, those minutes from February second.
There's actually a correction that needs to be made, I don't know. Under liaison updates, Debbie, um it was the downtown improvement committee that suggested we speak with the Chamber of Commerce, not the bike committee.
So that that marks the meeting as Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning, yes, and I think it would be good if the chief, what is the chief Fitzgerald gonna attend? Because sometimes he attends.
I heard him say he was gonna do that.
Yeah.
I I think the kiosk thing would be a good thing to open a discussion on, and perhaps suggest that if he if he wants to do something, perhaps he could suggest it in a pilot mode as opposed to putting kiosks all over town. I'm sure there's a way to test out his theory in a non-scary way to the businesses. If he had anything like that in mind, that would be a good thing to bring forth.
I may have missed an email. What, where this is the commu, this is the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yes, the Manchester stuff is gonna be at thirty-five beach, I think, is what it said, right?
It starts at eight-thirty, is it?
It's really early on Wednesday.
Eight, I think it's eight.
Eight, yeah.
Eight AM at thirty-five beach on Wednesday morning.
On Wednesday?
Wednesday morning.
Make it a little bit. This is off off topic, but. Great.
Sorry, I brought it up.
I will, I will try and.
I just stood in with your comment.
Right, yes, it's my comment, okay, I was out of control. That was on the minutes we were talking about. So if that one changed in the minutes, I would.
Sir, a move.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the the one amendment.
Yeah, second.
Becky, yes. Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Dan abstained. Dan of St.
Yes.
John said yes. And now we have the town's.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Walker Street water line work is getting underway, a little bit of a delay. Talked about this a little bit before. So replacing the water main on Walker, there'll be some new, new service line for a few homes because currently the water main was behind some homes right in the front, so that'll be redone. So there'll be some traffic impacts, you know, one-way at a time, and some service disruptions. But again, the DP dev will be reaching out to households individually and giving them a heads up as to, as to what's happening. That's FYI. The compensation study for department leaders, been a little bit of delay there, but we should have that ready for your review and discussion at your next meeting. We have a couple of new strong candidates, pleased to report, for the planner position. We'll be doing those interviews tomorrow, and keep my fingers crossed that we can
Awesome, that's great.
Find, bring somebody on board, hopefully by the first of the year would be my hope. In, in the meantime, we have worked with MFPC to provide some interim planner assistance.
So just a question on that. So the article to move the money from an employee account to professional services, how far does that take us? Because if we now hire an employee in January, let's say.
Right, we're only taking ten thousand amount.
Okay, so you're only just taking a small amount.
Small amount.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, we'll be fine.
Okay. We won't have to, the same article next town meeting reversing it, that's why.
Right, Valerie, hopefully not, we shouldn't have to do that.
You can speak to that, too.
And, yeah, lastly, I just, you know, we've, we've, you know, the vast majority of people are very civil and very cogent in their arguments and take personalities out of it. But we do see that slipping sometimes. You know, it takes a toll. It takes a toll on staff. It takes a toll on people wanting to volunteer, and I just, I just want to put it out there as a reminder. Disagreement is all part of the democratic process, and I welcome that. I think it leads to stronger decisions in the long run. But I, I do strongly believe that we can be civil even in our disagreements. So I just, just a, just a reminder.
Thank you for the reminder.
I, I welcome and encourage people to, to engage and express their opinions and do it without disparaging remarks.
Mr. Gates, do you have something to add?
I'm sorry. Reverting to the Powder House Hill, I think whoever ends up with it should have the responsibility to keep trails clear and to post them so that people walking in the woods don't have to clamber over dead trees that fell and so forth. The way I read that, thinking further about it, said something about not disturbing any of fallen trees for whatever reason. And I need a cane, and I'm not gonna be able to climb over trees and blow all the trail. And so I think that should be something that should be kept in the back of your mind.
Well, as long as the town owns that property, that's not a problem. You can make decisions to spend money to maintain things as appropriate. I know that there are a couple of volunteer organizations that do that now, but we're in a position to do that. If that property were to be transferred to another entity, we would not be able to do that.
It should be spelled out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. This has been a long, hard meeting.
Good.
The trees got gone faster than I thought.
That's because, that's because Greg closed with that rhetoric.
All right, see you all tomorrow evening.
Yes.